This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Benzbocker.
Here.
Councilmember Finn. Councilmember Hun. And Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
And Councilwoman Lee is on Acosta.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of October 17th, 2017. We will begin this evening with one steady session agenda item, and that is development trends. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Jeff Teine.
I like that title. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. This is, thank you very much, Mayor. This is a beginning of a series of discussions that we're hoping to have with the City Council regarding future development and some of just our management of growth going forward in the future. I think as we complete our general plan here, as that's coming to fruition, it seems an ideal time for us to explore some of the trends and conditions affecting growth for the council to really put their mark on a number of key policy issues that is related to it. Our community certainly is no stranger to these issues of growth and growth management, but it's important to note that going forward, sometimes the solutions will be different. So today, we have Chris Hawkes, our Planning and Community Development Director, and Andy Granger, our Deputy City Manager. They'll focus a bit more today on the how and where we expect residential and commercial development primarily in the next five years. In addition, we'll offer just how these areas that will identify our best position for growth, what will be some of the infrastructure challenges, service issue considerations, and a little bit of how that relates to our business development as well. So really, this is meant to be more to tee up some more information down the road as we grapple with some of the policy issues that are there. And with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Granger to go into this more.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I just wanted to start off by just letting you know that this is supposed to be conversational, this presentation today. It's a little different than past study sessions where we give you a particular topic and ask you to recommend how we move forward on something. This is more to give you a background on development over the last five years, and as Jeff stated, some of the issues that we're probably going to face over the next five years with development as it moves forward. So as we move forward through this PowerPoint presentation, feel free to ask any questions that you may have, and we can go into more greater detail on some of those issues. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to give you an update on development that we've seen in the last five years. I certainly still have the scars from some of those developments and a prospective look looking forward to the next five years. With the general plan, it's always looking out ahead and seeing what our condition will be out in 20 years or so. It's always hard to determine what will actually occur in that timeframe. Our coastal ball just isn't that clear. So what we'll do today is look at what we think development will occur in the next five years, where those units will be distributed citywide. So it's always helpful to take a step back and take a snapshot of Peoria. As you all know, the city was incorporated in 1954, small farming community centered around Old Town. You can see on the slide in the middle, in yellow, that's the original town site. The growth in the community didn't really take off until the mid-1970s. That's when the growth in the Phoenix metropolitan area finally caught up to Peoria, and in earnest, that's when the growth took off. In fact, between 1975 and 2000, the city of Peoria added about 100,000 people and about 145 square miles in area. If you think back to 1975, our population at the time was only 5,000, and we had a city size of about seven square miles, so a very small community that grew up very quickly. If you look in the middle, too, the annexed area in Peoria, if you look at the area in dark blue, what that signifies is the city shape as it existed in 1990, where it was 63 square miles. And then in the 1990s, that's when many of those annexations took place, where we took in the Lake Pleasant area, we took in the areas that are now make up Lake Pleasant Heights and Saddleback Heights. That all occurred substantially in the 1990s to create the form that we have today. When we think about population distribution today, we like to look at Bell Road as our population centroid, meaning that half the population today is north of Bell Road and about half is south of Bell Road. Okay, this is a graphic of population projections that we've received from MAG. And so this shows you, I talked about that rise in population that started in the mid- 1970s. You can see today, we have a estimated population of about 171,000. By 2040, which happens to be that the general plan horizon, we are estimated to have 278,000 people. So that will be an addition of about 106,900 persons that are contemplated in that timeframe. So if you think about, in a minute, I'll show you the permit data, that would be to reach that number, we would have to receive 1,600 permits per year, which is about what we had last year. So, excuse me, there could be years where we receive more permits, some years we receive less, but on average, we would receive 1,600 permits per year, or a population of 4,200 people per year on average to get to that number.
Chris?
Yes.
How much land will we still have left after our population reaches 278,000?
Excuse me. It's hard to say. It depends on what our build-out population will be, ultimately will be. According to the general plan today, that's around 375,000 is what it projects.
So substantial.
Mayor, what you'll see as we go forward in this presentation, we're going to show you geographically where we see the development happening across the city. And what you're going to see is primarily, it's to the north. And as we continue forward into 2040, it's going to keep going further up in north, and that's going to, and you're going to see that it's primarily dependent on state land, as well as private landowners. But state land owns a majority of that land in the north. So that's where, those are the types of issues that we're going to have to confront as we move forward and develop through the future, is where that's going to be. But it's going to be, the majority of that vacant land is going to be further north from where it is today, to answer your question.
Okay, so I'm interested to see that, if the growth is all around, in and out of the state land, and then the state land accepted, still vacant.
I think our opinion would be that there's so much state land that the southern areas that are closer to development will be the first ones that will be released by state land. There's so much state land that the land that's further north will still be available in the future.
All right. I thought we'd show some, these show employment concentration. So if we look at the concentration of employment or jobs per square mile, these are MAG figures that have been provided. This is 2015, and what this shows is that currently, Peoria has about 49,500 jobs. The West Valley overall is about 14.1% of the overall job shed in the region. What's projected to occur, and this is 2030 numbers, MAG projections, is that Peoria would see an increase of about 50% to 72,600 jobs by that timeframe. So West Valley in that timeframe would move from 14% to nearly 17% of the total job shed.
So the intent of this slide is also just to show you that we're going to talk primarily about residential growth. We'll go into a little bit about commercial growth also. But the residual benefit, one of the residual benefits of that residential growth is going to be economic development opportunity, as MAG projects here, to grow about 50% in jobs from 2015 to 2030 also.
Okay, so today, we're going to, in a second, we're going to provide you with a perspective of where growth has occurred and where we expect it to occur in the near future. But before we look at these trends, I think it's instructive to revisit the major land ownership throughout our planning area. So this graphic on the right shows areas within our planning area, and you'll recall, that's a little bit beyond our city limits. These are areas that we expect someday to annex into the city of Peoria. These are areas that we actively plan for as part of our general plan, but it's a slightly larger area than our city limits. So looking at the graphic, the privately held land today is about 40% of the planning area. That's all the land that's shown without a color, in the white, all the developed areas of Peoria. And when you look at the northwest part of the city, where Vistancia, Lake Pleasant, Saddleback Heights, that's all the privately held land. The State Trust land, and I'll talk about that, their mission in a second, that's all the land in blue. So you can see that that's all principally located along the Loop 303 and areas north and west of those areas. That's about 24%, or about a quarter of the land mass in the planning area. The Bureau, the Federal Bureau of Land Management, that's the area in orange, principally north of State Route 74. That's about 20% of the land area. And then the Board of Reclamation, they own the area containing and area around Lake Pleasant. However, that area is managed by the Maricopa County. They're about 12% of that land mass. So I wanted to talk specifically about two of those large entities, the first being the Bureau of Land Management. Again, that's the area in orange. And so the BLM, that's an agency within the U.S. Department of the Interior. They administer a lot of land throughout the United States. In fact, they're about 1/8 of the total U.S. land masses under the management of the BLM. Their mission is very different. They have really a preservationist position, preservationist mission, and a recreational mission. So the areas north of 74, they have what's called a resource management plan. It's kind of like their general plan for the areas under their administration. And so that, what that plan does is it asserts the use and not only of the surface lands, but the subsurface lands within their administration. So we don't expect development to occur in those areas. We expect it to be primarily left in its place or have a recreational use assigned to it. The Arizona State Land Department, their mission is very different. They manage about 9.2 million acres throughout Arizona that were provided to them upon statehood. They're the area that's located in blue, and they have a constitutional mission to hold land to maximize its value. And they hold that land to where they, to a point where they think its value is to a point where they can then auction off, auction the land off for maximum proceeds, optimal proceeds for the underlying beneficiaries. There happens to be 13 beneficiaries for the State Land Department. The largest beneficiary happens to be what they call Common Schools or K-12 education. But they're in the business to hold land until they can optimal, maximize its value.
Chris, can you hold it on that slide for just a minute? So when we go forward in our presentation, we show you where we project growth over the next five years, you'll see that that has a lot to do with where the state land is to the north, because state land's going to hold on to theirs until they get a highest and best use value for their land, which means they're not going to develop that land in the near future. At least, we don't predict that they will. So when we look forward and when Chris presents further into the presentation about, here's the subdivisions that we think are going to develop over the next five years, and you go, well, what about this to the north of there? Predominantly, that's state land, and they're going to hold that and preserve that until they get the value that they want. So that is, in some ways, considered a growth boundary for us until they dispose of that land in the future. And so to your previous question, when you say, what do we look at when we grow out to 2040 and we've got a significant population, where's the land going to be that can be developed beyond that? It's going to be that's those state land areas that are probably closer to the SR74, to the northwest and to the northeast within the city of Peoria. But it'll be, you know, sequential from probably that 303 corridor to the SR74 corridor, is what we would predict.
So what you're saying is it's going to develop in an organized manner from south to north?
That's what we would predict.
So when you say that the state land's mission is to enhance value and optimize return, that's different than holding on to it until forever, until all the other land is sold. So enhance, I mean, is that literally enhance value and optimize return? Is that literally what it says in their mission?
Mayor, that is correct. That's what they do. They hold land until they believe it has a value that they can then auction it off and maximize the proceeds that they can then turn over to the trust.
But it doesn't say hold land, and that is why, that is what I'm questioning. It does say enhance value, though. And so when we have talked to them about entitling land, or maybe putting infrastructure up to that land, those kinds of things do enhance value. So if this is their actual mission, instead of holding the land for as long as they choose, that's two different things. I'm just questioning whether this is the exact text.
Mayor, it's a portion, it's a portion out of their mission statement. It's a much longer mission statement, but it's a very important part of their mission statement, right out of it, though.
You know, Mayor, I probably could tend to mention, yeah, this is, what we've seen has been the business practice for state land, is with this specific mission, they have decided to hold on to that land till such time that around it has been developed, and they feel that that has been their strategy to get their highest and best value out of that. But I think to your point, we should continue the conversations with them to show that they're, we truly could optimize that, where we don't just leave it as some kind of stray parcel that's out there that may actually could lose the value, or lose out on some of the infrastructure opportunity. And so it's a continuing conversation that we'll be proposing going forward.
And they also have a large part in weighing in on our general plan as we create it.
Mayor, that's correct. And we have regular discussions with them about, you know, refining their land area. And when I go into the presentation, I'll show you two of the large growth corridors in the city, the central corridor in the northwest, and they happen to be adjacent to state lands. And so as those lands start developing, as we start to see pressure, state land's going to feel the pressure, too.
But during the downturn, one of the things that state land had experienced is a lot of the land that they had auctioned off and sold came back to them during the downturn when developers went bankrupt. So one of the first things that they told us when we would meet with them is, the first thing that their priority is to sell those parcels and develop those parcels before they even look at disposing of any other state land within the city of Peoria. So the Alora Vita parcel, the Meadows parcel, and the Camino South parcel, which Chris is going to show in a minute, are some of those parcels that they've told us they need to have developed before they even look at that Loop 303 corridor.
And that makes sense.
Yeah.
So then to Andy's point, these happen to be two of the properties within Peoria that are currently being marketed. So if you look at the figure on your left, I'll describe the geography there for you. That is the, what we call the Camino South parcel. It's directly across the street from the Walmart center on Lake Pleasant Parkway at Deer Valley. That's the state land holding there in dark blue. That parcel is currently being marketed. It's going through an appraisal process, and from what we understand, we expect the auction to occur sometime early next year, early 2018 is when that is expected to go to auction. The property on the right, about 17 acres in dark blue, that's located around the new fries at Lake Pleasant and Happy Valley. It's that L-shaped property around it. While the property is being marketed and they've gotten some inquiries, it's not as far along in the process. There is no auction date that's contemplated right now for that property. But those are the two that citywide are being marketed.
Thank you. And I just wanted to ask one other question, because there's a very long parcel on the opposite side of this one, on Lake Pleasant Parkway, that actually prevents traffic flow in some strange ways. So can we impact this seven-shaped piece of land and request that they take a look at the, that long shape on the other side of the street?
Mayor and Council, we can certainly have that conversation with state land. I'm not sure what the disposition of that is right now, but it would make sense. It's the last remaining holdout parcel of that center, so we're certainly have that conversation with them.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move into development patterns and trends that we've seen. And what I'd like to do, start off first, is to look at single-family permitting activity over the last five years as compared to some of our valley peers. So city of Peoria is identified in yellow. We start with 2012, and you can see, coming out of the recession, we started to see a rise in permit activity. Last year, we were 1,641 permits. The percent number means that we represented about 9% of the permits that were issued valleywide. So that's the position. We happened to be the third highest permits in the valley, just behind the city of Phoenix and Mesa that year. Now, in 2017, activity is about the same or a little higher rate than we've experienced last year. We project that we'll receive about 1,750 single-family permits. Just to give you kind of a relative idea of, you know, what does that number feel like? What does it mean? If you think back to the highest growth areas, growth years 2000, 2006, the city was receiving about 2,800 permits in those two years. If you think about a recent low year, so 2009, I think we got 375 permits that year, so right out of the recession. And those were, as you would expect, mainly around the Trilogy area, so kind of an insulated population there with people retiring and continuing to retire.
If you, just add on to that, too, if you listen to the economists, as well as the developers that we talk to on a daily basis that develop in Peoria, they tend to think that this is going to be stable growth for the next couple of years at least, and that's about as far out as they can look right now. So residential development will continue, in their opinion, in, you know, especially for Peoria, we can look and say, we'll probably build about 1,600 or 1,700 single-family residential permits per year, at least for the next couple of years. So they're, I wouldn't say they're bullish, but they think that we can sustain this. They don't think that there's going to be growth or not significant growth, but there's not going to be a downturn either.
And here's another graphic that I thought was instructive in trying to understand the regional trends here. This happens to be a graphic that was developed by MAG. This shows valley housing sales price. I know it's hard to see all the colors, but I'll explain what they are to you. The areas that are in red, that's, this is sales price as of 2015, okay? So if you're in red, the average sales price was under $100,000. If it's the area in yellow, which is about half of the total valley land area, is a sales price between $100,000 and $250,000. If it's green, it's between $250,000 and $400,000. And then blue would be the greater than $400,000 sales price range. So you can see the distribution of those house price ranges. What I've identified on the screen is a section of Peoria where we've seen the most predominant areas of growth, the central corridor, which I'll get into in a minute, and the area in the northwest. But you'll see those price trends are in the, largely in the blue and green area. So they're above the $250,000, above the $400,000 range. When you look at the West Valley overall, there are very few of those areas. There is probably the area in Verado that's blue and green, the Pebble Creek area in Goodyear, but really, in the entire West Valley, it's really the North Peoria area. And relative to the rest of the valley, the North Peoria area is very competitive in sales price relative to Awatuki. You can see Chandler and Gilbert with the smattering of blue and green, and then, well, Scottsdale is mostly, mostly blue. But you can see our position in those areas relative to other areas in the valley. And I think what this speaks to, I think it's important to note that what this speaks to is the desirability of the area and why I think the central corridor and northern parts of Peoria are very desirable. I think, for one hand, we've seen a much increased access to the area, certainly with the development of Happy Valley. That's, people now have access to the employment corridors along I-17. The Lake Pleasant widening, I'll say the Loop 303 has made that area much more accessible. I think the quality of the schools also play in. I think also the fact that Peoria is still considered an inner-ring suburb, so it's still proximate to a lot of the services and a lot of the amenities, not only within the city, but also valleywide. So it's a very desirable area, and not to mention just the beautiful topography that we're starting to, starting to reach in the area. So it's in the shadow and the backdrop of those areas, so very much a very desirable area valleywide. So what I'm going to talk about in the next several slides, and I'm going to go by geography, we've broken the city up into three areas, south of Bell, east of the Agria, and west of the Agria. So I'll talk first about south of Bell. And what we're looking at here on the graphic is single-family residential permitting that we saw in the last five years. So on the map, you'll see concentrations of red. The red areas are where we've issued single-family permits over the last five years. Overall, in this sector of the city, we've issued 844 single-family permits. That represents about 12% of the total single-family permits that we've issued citywide. The development in these areas are smaller infill parcels. These parcels range between 10 and 40 acres. These are areas where there is existing infrastructure in place. But you can, a lot of these developments probably look very familiar to you that have developed, Three Olive Park, Cross Point, Grand Manor. So a lot of infill development activity that we've seen in that timeframe. Other sectors of growth over the last five years, so these are areas that are either multifamily, we've seen a couple of multifamily infill projects that have occurred. We have one under construction, of course, the Bungalows project at 83rd and Olive. We had Santana Village on Peoria Avenue, a very nice multifamily project that developed a few years ago on Peoria Avenue. But this represents the other key areas of growth that we saw in the last five years. We continue to see retail infill opportunities, primarily in the 75th Avenue Thunderbird area where we have retail, we saw retail infill there. We also saw the entry of assisted living facilities, and we've got a few of those citywide that are under construction or are in various stages of planning. One that's under construction, south of Olive at 107th Avenue. And we've also had some medical office infill, continued infill at Plaza del Rio, and continued infill at 75th Avenue and Thunderbird. And then, and then a nice renovation project with the Lucidity Distillery in Old Town. We hope that's the seed that will help generate more attention to the Old Town area. And then, most recently, the opening of TYR Tactical at 91st Avenue and Peoria. Okay, so I'm going to look prospectively now, and so looking at the next five years in the area south of Bell. So these are projects we know about or have been entitled. This is where they are in various stages and how many units we expect in that timeframe. So as I indicated, Bungalows and Olive, that's currently under construction. Townley Park happens to be the development that's 91st and Olive behind the fries. West Point is an entitled project, although at 75th and Olive. And then we have a few others that are in the entitlement. When I say entitlement, I mean, they're going through the rezone process right now. You'll see, certainly 99th and Olive, you'll see Bella Brisa in a future council meeting. And then the northwest corner of 75th and Thunderbird, this is an area that's in, that's currently in the county, but we're in the process of annexing it. In fact, tonight, we'll talk about an annexation case, but there is a development proposed there. Overall, we expect about 467 units to occur south of Bell Road. This will be, we're projecting about 7% of the total single-family units that we see citywide in the next five years.
And obviously, as Chris said, this area is largely developed, and that's the reason that you're not going to see a lot of new growth in south of Bell, because it is primarily developed. And so it's also going to be harder to predict. It's probably going to be a lot more than 477 projected units, but it's largely infill units, and so it's going to be hard for us to predict exactly where those units are going to fall throughout that area. Whereas in north of Bell, where we've got entitled master-planned communities, it's a little easier to predict where that growth's going to occur.
And a great segue, because to Andy's point, this is other projected sectors for growth over the next five years. What we tried to identify, too, is, so if you see the areas, the circles with black, those are the few large vacant areas that exist in the area south of Bell. So of course, there's 57 acres at 103rd and Northern, not a great developable piece because it was a former landfill, I believe, so not a, not a great place to develop. Probably the largest area within the area is the Rovi Farms. Much of that area is in the county. Now, the Rovis have talked to the city about the area, desire of the area to be residential. Actually, as you probably know, it's industrial on our general plan and probably one of the few industrial areas citywide. So that's at least a conversation they've started with the city. Other potential projects, I think that the one that we're really excited about is the recent announcement of Maricopa Integrated Health Services facility at the southeast corner of Cotton Crossing and Grand Avenue. I think this will be a huge boon to the area. It's a $70 million project, 127,000 square feet. It'll offer everything from urgent care to operating rooms, dental clinic. But not only will it bring more traffic to the area around Old Town, but just think of all the jobs it's going to provide there, the doctors, the technicians. I think it's really going to be a boon for not only the areas around Old Town, but the area in general. Also, we're, you know, we're going to see continued pressure PD3 district. We've got some interest. We've had some pre-apps around 75th and Paradise Lane, some interest of possibly hospitality or multifamily. Also, you know, the economic developments talked to you in the past about the redevelopment of the 17 acres around the Mariner site, so we're hopeful that PD3 area will continue to see interest going forward. There will be some multifamily infill that we're looking at. We recently approved a zoning case called the Landmark Multifamily at Olive and 67th, and another multifamily project called T-83. I don't have a play on P-83, but T-83, Thunderbird and 83rd, but it's at the northeast corner of 83rd and Thunderbird. That's still a project that's still in, is still alive. And then continued retail infill predominantly at Thunderbird and 75th, and also, or Thunderbird and 83rd, and then 95th and Olive. So that's what we think will grow in the non-residential areas in the next five years. Okay, so now we're going to move to what we'll call the central corridor. And so in form, we're going to look at the last five years of permitting activity. So just by way of summary, we issued over the last five years, 4,010 single-family permits. This was the great majority of permits that was issued citywide. It was 57% of the total single-family permits. So what we saw in this area, we had established communities that we continue to see build out, communities like West Wing, Tierra del Rio, Rock Springs, that already had a lot of growth, but continue to see a build out. We also saw newer entitlements that came online, developments like Tierra del Sol on Happy Valley, Corincia, and then some of the developments along the Happy Valley corridor. So I talked a minute ago about the improved access to the area, and what I saw was the heightened desirability of this part of Peoria, and also an area that has available infrastructure or infrastructure that's proximate. So this has been a very, you know, big growth area in the last five years. So over the fat last five years, looking at other sectors of growth, the area we affectionately call the four corners, that's Happy Valley, Lake Pleasant Parkway. We continue to see, as more rooftops occur out there, continued commercial infill in those areas. We also saw some infill that's starting, or some retail development that's starting at the Taraza project at 67th and Happy Valley. I think over the next five years, you'll I think over the next five years, you'll see, you'll continue to see growth there as well. Again, citywide, some assisted living facilities that are coming online. The one that will soon be under construction is the one at Taraza at 67th and Happy Valley. Some medical office infill with the, the Honor Health Facility along Happy Valley, and then medical facility at Joe Maxx and Lake Pleasant Parkway. And then, what will soon be under construction is the Cibola Vista Resort Expansion. So this is a, they're adding two three-story buildings or another 56 timeshare units there. So continued expansion of Cibola Vista.
So Chris, just, just a moment. When we look at this area as far as residential development over the last five years, as well as our commercial development, a lot of that is the benefits of a lot of that infrastructure that Chris talked about earlier, as far as the Beersley Connector, the Happy Valley Parkway improvements, the Lake Pleasant Parkway improvements, Loop 303, the park investments that we've made up north, and as well as entitlements in that area, were always pre-existing for the most part. Some of it was given back to banks, or was given back to state land and is now getting redeveloped. It's going to get more difficult over the next five years when we talk about future development and infrastructure requirements and development requirements. Why I say that is, those are the discussions that we're going to have moving forward. We probably won't get into too much detail tonight, but when you talk about community facilities districts versus impact fees versus us funding capital projects to help support future development, those are the type of issues that we're going to have to discuss going forward. And then, they're going to be somewhat difficult discussions to have that we haven't had to have in the past because of the infrastructure that we were able to put into the ground to help benefit this, this development.
Thank you for mentioning that. I think it's really important for us to be proactive on that discussion because the, the landscape has changed, and the way cities are growing and the way cities are, can fund their growth has changed, and we really need to get out ahead of that, you know, considering how much growth we still have.
Yeah, one other, one, a key, you know, prime example of that is the Meadows Public Park that, that's going to have to get developed. And when we negotiated that development agreement with Community Southwest, it was anticipated that impact fees were going to support and fund the entire public, 10-acre public park. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case because of that impact fee legislation, and the city has had to fund, or will be funding, four and a half million dollars of that park. So that impacts other parks throughout the city because of that. So that's just one small example of the, how impact, that impact fee legislation has impacted us and will in the future.
They, they sort of fell right in the transition period there, and we can use that for an example of how things can actually affect us as we move forward. Doesn't necessarily have to be the roadmap to how we move forward, though.
Correct.
Okay, looking forward into the next five years, it's probably no surprise, we expect this to, to continue to be a major growth area in the city. So what this graphic shows you on the left is, these are some of the projects where we expect a lot of those, a lot of those permit activity to occur. The column in the middle, life cycle, what does that mean? That means that the, how many permits have been issued relative to the total entitlement they have. For example, West Wing can have a maximum of 2,150 units. Thus far, we've issued about 74% of that entitlement. So it just kind of gives you an idea of where they are in the life cycle. So as you look at the graphic, you know, West Wing is substantially built out. There are a few remaining parcels predominantly at the ones that are being developed today at Lake West Wing Parkway and Lake Pleasant Parkway. You can see other developments. Teodora Rio, 84%. Florenza, 75%. So those projects are substantially built out. I think the one that I was surprised is the Meadows, which is the consistently one of the highest permit generators for the city. I thought it'd be much higher in its life cycle. It's about 43% built out, but no question that at the end of five years, the rest of that entitlement will, will come to fruition there. But just kind of gives you a relative sense of where these projects are. The ones that are on the horizon that we expect to develop the next five years, that are at the 0%, Happy Valley 40, for example, on Happy Valley Parkway. Tierra del Sol is in the beginning stages of that development. Hidden Paradise Estates, Riverwalk, those two are contingent upon each other for infrastructure. The Alora Vita project, if it takes off, we expect maybe in the range of 750 permits over the next five years. And then the Four Seasons project is not on the map here, but that's the one that was recently approved by council at Ventana Lakes. That's an aid-restricted community. So overall, we expect in the next five years, we expect about 46% and nearly half of the permit issuance to be in the central corridor. And, and you can see the subtotal and the amount of population that we expect it to generate.
So one other discussion that we're going to have besides infrastructure requirements going forward with developments is also operational requirements, city services that are going to be impacted, in, in a good way, is with new development. But with new development, we're going to have to have additional services. So first, for instance, when we talk about potentially 1,600 new single-family permits every year, to give you an idea from a trash collection, solid waste collection perspective, that's about, that's the requirement of about one and a half new drivers every year needed to keep the same service that we have today. So if you look out five years from now, that's, you know, another, what, seven and a half drivers or eight drivers that we're going to need to keep up with our, our city services. And, and that's not just in solid waste. In public works, in public safety, in all of our city services, that's going to be an impact that we're going to have to plan for in the future.
I think that it's important to say, because a lot of the, the residents who live here and in all throughout Arizona have come from other places, and especially in the east and the Midwest where property taxes are very high, and when a new home is built, the property taxes pay for the obligations that come with it, such as all the infrastructure and the parks and, and all the, you know, police and fire and everything. In Arizona, that is not the case. So we don't make money when new development comes in and have enough money to support that. So we have to look for other sources of revenue to support the growth. Just wanted to say that. It's a really, really important fact and, and one that a lot of people don't always understand because they've come from other areas.
Mayor, I think that's a, a great point, and of course, one that you've all had to deal with in the budget process, and it's going to continue. You know, a number of those, as Andy had talked about, some of our enterprise funds, they're more helpful in that they are specifically fees that are charged for that specific service at that site, and, and so it's a little more equated. But you're exactly right. Something we require much more from sales tax. And that sales tax really depends on where the specific properties are, and if there's leakage from other communities. And it gets a little trickier on to deal with some of these major issues like including public safety. Great point.
Okay, over the next five years, other projected sectors for growth, we're going to continue to see retail infill at the Four Corners, Taraza, and hopefully at the Kimino, the Walmart Center on, on Lake Pleasant Parkway. Where we are seeing some development pressure today on the commercial side is particularly 83rd and Happy Valley. You'll recall, we, we approved a 83rd Marketplace at the southeast corner, a small nine-acre development there. We just got a zoning case for the southwest corner for a very small office development. It's a really tiny, irregular-shaped piece of property that's surrounded by Lake, by, rather, state land. And then there's some discussion afoot about what should be the disposition of the northeast corner, and there's been, so there's, there's questions for us about, as we look ahead, you know, what do we want that corner to look like? Do we want it to look like other corners that had developed in the city, or should it be markedly different? So that's a conversation that's occurring now, that will be occurring in future days with the council. But we have, you know, the whole retail landscape has changed quite dramatically. So the old days of having commercial development at every mile intersection is not going to be the case going forward. So we may need to be very judicious on, on what those new developments look like. So that's a very, very much a key corner for us to consider. Also along Lake Pleasant Parkway, you'll recall years ago, we can, we restrained commercial development to key intersections. But certainly when you look at some of the, the parcels along Lake Pleasant Parkway, with Lake Pleasant Parkway being at a diagonal, there are, there are a lot of isolated parcels. There might be some question as to whether the highest and best use is large lot residential, or is it some other land use? So that's something we'll have to use at office, is it some other land use? That's something we'll have to contemplate as part of the next general plan update. I think it's also instructive to point out several growth-related capital projects that are in the planning stages or, or in the near future. Of course, the community park, fiscal year 19. The Meadows Park that Andy indicated to you a minute ago is in the CIP for FY 19 and 20. The Lone Mountain Waterline, that's a, that's a really big project that's really important, particularly for the northwest area. I'll speak about that in a minute. The projected completion of that is, is 2019. And then the Happy Valley Widening Bridge Project fiscal year 18 and 19. So those are key capital projects that will occur over the next few years in support of development.
And Chris, I would just like to add on to your conversation about those, those projected areas of development. We've got an opportunity to prime the pump, if you will, for how that development is going to look, because that, that is what makes the difference in the character of the area and the types of homes that are built and, and in the kinds of retail and/or employment that comes to those areas. So we have to be very mindful of what a city can do to help those areas be the best that they can be, so that a developer will come in, a private development will come in and do the best that they can do. You know, we don't just want it to be a gas station on every corner and a Circle K right next to it. You know, we want to make sure that we build our community the way that matches the character of the citizens who live in our community.
Right.
And that's our opportunity with all of this area.
Very true, Mayor.
Great point. And what, what Chris said, as far as that 83rd and Happy Valley, that northeast corner is one of those prime spots where we don't want to miss an opportunity, where we can really shape what that area is going to look like. And so that's where, that will probably be a future discussion on what that, you know, what we want to, to be in that area. And that'll go to the general plan as well as specifically to what develops in that, on that corner.
Yeah, thank you.
And just to my point earlier too, as you can see here, when we talk about, when I talked about state land and kind of as a growth boundary to the north, that's where, if you look at West Wing, and it goes up to a certain point where it's labeled Lake Pleasant Parkway there, that's the Dixelleto alignment, and to the north of that is primarily state land. So that's where we're going to look at what we want that area to be and plan that area out, and we have, and will be more specific in the future with our, our, our update of the general plan. But that's, that's going to be a key area of the future that we want to, and it's going to be a future discussion with council as far as, do we want that to be retail commercial? Do we want that to be more of a, an office space or, or more of an, a business development type of area that's not retail, like an office park? And there's, there's also a ridge there. If you, it's hard to tell from this PowerPoint or this slide, but there's a ridge there. So you've got an upper area adjacent to Lake Pleasant Parkway, but then you've got a, a lower area that it drops about 60 to 70 feet. And in that lower area is, is, is still prime developable land that's owned by, primarily by state land. And, and we think that the, maybe more business office park in that area would be more beneficial. But just, just as, as a precursor to future discussions with council on what that area could be.
Thank you.
But that's kind of where you say, if you ask, well, what about that area? We've got, we just, we just expanded Lake Pleasant Parkway and improved it up to the Loop 303. We've got a beautiful road there. We've got all the infrastructure there. Why isn't it developing? And the, the reason is, is because of state land right now.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to move into the, the northwest area or the area principally around Vistancia, as you can see. Over the last five years, we've issued 2,180 single-family permits that represented about a third of the total single-family permits that we've issued citywide. Now, the development that we've seen, it's, these, this area is comprised of large, you know, thousands of acre master planned communities, Vistancia, Lake Pleasant Heights, Saddleback Heights, and then a new community that came online over the last five years, Trilogy West, which is a companion community to the Trilogy at Vistancia. We've also seen over the last few years, coming out of the recession, a repositioning of some of these projects. So each one of those three projects that I've mentioned had amendments to their entitlement, and they came in to adjust some of the land uses. In some cases, they eliminated golf course amenity, which they didn't, they saw a level of saturation Valley wide. So you saw some repositioning of those projects over the last five years. And then, as I indicated earlier, with the permit activity during the recession, we saw some insulation from the aid-restricted component that, that by Trilogy and Trilogy Some of the key, other key sectors of growth over the last five years, the completion of the bridge over Vistancia Boulevard, this is a privately completed bridge, but the, the bridge does position development into the northern parts of Vistancia. And as I talk in a minute, you'll see that we expect, it's possible that some of that development might be across the north side of the cap, across that bridge. We saw some minor commercial infill, you know, the only commercial project in this area at Vistancia and El Mirage Road. Some of the capital projects that took place, of course, the extension of the El Mirage Road from Vistancia to Lone Mountain Parkway. And that project was to help seed potential new development in Village D, which is the commercial core in Vistancia. And then also the Lone Mountain connection to Loop 303. So now we have better access to this area from the Loop 303.
Chris, and Andy, just real quick on that, you kind of have a, a natural barrier right there at the cap canal for a couple of reasons. I know you had mentioned, maybe you can mention some about the topography, as well as the development agreements that we have there that would trigger, that probably are creating an artificial barrier?
Yeah, the, thanks, Jeff. This, this has been a development barrier for both Vistancia and it will be for Lake Pleasant Heights because of the infrastructure requirements. Vistancia's built a bridge. It was a $5 million bridge, which is a significant capital investment for a developer when they're trying to develop new residential development. But beyond that, when you get north of the CAP, it's more mountainous and rougher terrain. So it creates hard dig conditions where to build the roads, to build the water and sewer and other public infrastructure, the cost goes up sequen, and just sequentially. So it's, it's significantly more expensive to, to develop when you go north of the CAP. So when there's other opportunities south of the CAP that are more economical for developers, they're going to take those opportunities before they're going to go north. So Vistancia is right now trying to market that area north of the CAP, but those are the hurdles that they're running into as far as when developers come in, they see what the risks are as far as infrastructure costs, and that's why we haven't seen development to date north of the CAP. And that's why we predict, while the bridge is there for Vistancia, for them to go north may be more feasible and probably will happen in the next five years, we don't predict Lake Pleasant Heights will probably go north of the CAP within the next five years. That's not to say that it won't happen, but you're going to have to see somebody that will, a developer that will, will see that as an opportunity that will pencil out and they'll be able to make a profit, which right now doesn't seem like it's viable.
And so to, as an example, when we talk about financing growth, this is a great example where we have to think through from a policy issue what this would mean. The developer might see that there's significant costs north of the cap, as we just had mentioned. They may be interested in utilizing what's called a community facilities district to do that. But that district would have extremely higher rate than what you would see, for example, in the Vistancia area. But it will be coming to you as the CFD board to make that decision, or the option of having representatives that are not you. It's the type of thing that will absolutely be teeing up for you. It gets a little complex, but really, really important on how growth will be managed here in the future.
Thank you.
All right, we'll look prospectively. Let's see, where is growth going to occur in this area? Well, and, and here's another example of where you can look at the life cycle. Vistancia is about halfway built out. We've issued about half of the total permits there. Trilogy West, about a third. But we expect activity, if you look at the right, the graphic on the right, the areas that are circled in red, those are the development, the areas that we think will get continued development pressure over the next five years. So looking at the Vistancia area, that's going to be continued development within that project, and some areas along Lone Mountain and Vistancia Boulevard. Mystic, this is a new project that has been submitted to the city, that's part of Lake Pleasant Heights area, south of the cap. I'll show you a graphic of that in a second. Potentially development in what we call Village 8 in Vistancia, but it's an area just north and west of the bridge into Vistancia. And then another high-pressure area, which is flatland, but privately owned land, that's west of Trilogy. The council saw a zoning case a few meetings ago, it's in Orin Place. We have another one in progress that's under review right now called Granite Hills, but we certainly have some development pressure in those areas to the west. And I'll show you a little more information on, on those ones specifically. So overall, the next five years, we expect about 47% of the projected units to be in this area. So you'll recall, we said about 46% was going to be in the central, the central corridor. So between those two areas, that's going to capture the vast majority of new, new development. So if you look at the graphic on the left, this is that area I talked about, that we're starting to see some development on the southern part of Lake Pleasant. So this is the area south of the cap, the area that's still flatland. It's a directly adjacent to the Blackstone portion of Vistancia. We've got a preliminary plat that has come in for 475 units there. So if you look at the graphic on the right, that shows the phasing. So the first phase of that development would be, and that portion A1, that would include not only Westland, the Westland Extension, but also El Mirage down to Vistancia. That would be part of that Phase 1. And there would be an HOA community park that's part of that phase. You can see the build-out, the sequence, the, the sequence in build-out of the areas south of the cap. According to information we've received from the developer, they, they expect the area[1780.69] According to information we've received from the developer, they expect the area south of the cap to develop out in about 10 years. They think it'll be a 10-year build-out for those areas. The area that you see south of that though is a state land, so that there's a portion that's part of Lake Pleasant that's within state land ownership there. And then this graphic, there we go, this shows you a graphic that shows the portion that's going to be developed as part of Phase 1 and then some of the trail and park connections as part of that.
This is a good example of what we were talking about earlier, where a lot of the major infrastructure isn't in place for Lake Pleasant Heights. So, when Jeff referenced a community facilities district, we are already in talks with Lake Pleasant Heights. Voyager Properties is the owner of the property or representing the owner or a partner in the project. And so, they're coming in to figure out how some, a portion of this can be funded through a community facilities district. And that's, this is what we have not had for the large part of the city in the past have experienced because we've had the infrastructure in place. So, when we look at Westland Road, which right now dead ends at the eastern end of Vistancia, adjacent to Blackstone, and El Mirage Road from north of Lone Mountain, for the, they're starting to upgrade that property as part of Vistancia, but a majority of it will be the responsibility of Lake Pleasant Heights. This is significant infrastructure that will cost millions and millions of dollars to build, and they're going to look at either community facility district or impact fees to help fund a large portion of this. So, a future conversation for council to, that we will present to councils to, and recommend, provide a staff recommendation on how we feel we should move forward with CFDs and impact fees for this project in particular.
Are they able to share in the Lone Mountain water line?
As far as...
Lake Pleasant Heights.
So, Lake Pleasant Heights is a partner in the extension of the Lone Mountain water line across from Lake Pleasant Parkway over to the Loop 303. Yes. And they will be responsible for a portion of the water line that comes up El Mirage to feed their property also. So, I should say, it's not just the street infrastructure, it's also the water and wastewater infrastructure associated with that.
Yes. Councilmember Binsbacher.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if they're talking about a CFD, are they, would they approach it phase by phase? Or are they going to approach it for the entire development? Are there different ways to structure that?
There are different ways to structure that. We're in the beginning of conversations with them on that discussion. They do have a phased approach, but it is for the entire project that is owned by the Voyager Properties and their partners.
Okay, thank you.
And that is south of the CAP as well as north of the CAP.
Okay.
This is another area that we've seen a lot of development pressure. This is the area described a few minutes ago, west of Trilogy at Vistancia. Again, this is a lot of acreage of flat land that's privately held. Sonoran Place, that was an Ashton Witch project, 122 units. That was recently approved a few meetings ago by council. They're currently going through the subdivision process right now. I mentioned Granite Hills. That is a D.R. Horton project that is in review in terms of the zoning case. The council will see that at a future meeting. And then, if you look at the project to the northwest of it, this is a project called Haciendas at White Peak. It has not been formally submitted, but they have come to the city and talked to us in a pre-application meeting. So, the point here is just to demonstrate that there is a lot of attention, there is a lot of development pressure that we're seeing in the area. And I think what will be challenging for the city in terms of what the development form looks like here is that, as opposed to Vistancia and Lake Pleasant Heights, where you have large master-planned communities and you can, it's, you've got large tracts of land to plan out, trail connections and utility and roadway connections, we're dealing with small, smaller pieces here. So, it's harder, but it's no less important to make sure that we have proper connections, proper buffer, proper preservation of some of the unique features on the land frame. But it's usually harder with the smaller parcels.
Any questions?
The Haciendas at White Peak, there's this bit of land that's not in yellow and it's not in Trilogy West. Is that, let me guess?
State land.
No, Councilmember Binsbacher, that's actually privately-held.
Okay.
That's not in state land.
What would be the logic of them not connecting up to where the infrastructure stops?
Mayor, it's hard to say. It could be that they were just unable to obtain the property, they might have approached them and property might have other designs on it.
But it is something, when they would come in to talk to us, that's one thing that we would look at them and tell them to go back and do their due diligence. Did you talk to the private property owner? And if not, please go talk to them before you come back and talk to us.
That would be good.
And then, another area of pressure that I wanted to show the council, it's not, they're not in a city, but no less important because these developments are located in the county or in the city of surprise, but they have impacts. They have impacts on our streets, they have impacts on our public safety, on our automatic aid system. South of Vistancia, the Coldwater Ranch is located in Maricopa County. It's in our planning area, but it's in a county and is currently under development today. It's a 700 unit is the maximum dwelling units for that project. Due west of it, southwest of Vistancia, another project in a county, also on our planning area called Rancho Cabrillo. Portions of that are under construction overall, 1,700 units. And then, the area in purple, that's a master-planned community that's in the city of surprise, that's called Rancho Mercado, up to 4,400 units. That has not started construction yet, but I've heard it's not too far off. But these are, just wanted to show you projects that are near to the city and do have an impact on our area. Okay, other projected sectors for growth, we talked about the bridge enabling development north of the cap if it's financially feasible for it. Andy talked about the market change in topography north of the cap, the hillside areas. Development over the next five years, we're hopeful that Village D is an opportunity for potential commercial or employment development in that area. We've got some significant capital projects that are in the CAP, namely the Fire Station 198. So, you see that in red, there's two red dots there. One of those is in Vistancia, one of those is in Lake Pleasant Heights. And so, there's a fire station that's in the CAP for fiscal year '23, '24. It could be in Vistancia or Lake Pleasant Heights. I think it's going to just depend on where the need is in the area. So, we're not sure on that. And then, Lone Mountain Water Line, that's a private project. That's the six-party agreement that Andy referred to. The lead developer in the project is Vistancia, but the city of Peoria and other developers are parties to that project. Overall, it's a $10.6 million project. What it will consist of is design and completion of a 36-inch water line that will bring from Lake Pleasant Parkway to this area. And why it's important is it will connect the city's main distribution system to the current system in this area, in this sector of the city, and will enable further development. So, that project, when complete, will convey up to 22.8 million gallons per day, which is enough water to serve the average daily demand of about 49,000 homes. So, that's a very important project. It's projected to be complete somewhere in 2019 timeframe, but very much an important project for that area.
Just one other, when we talked about operational impacts too, with, if, when one of these fire stations is up and running, a fire station typically costs us about $1.2 million in ongoing operating costs on an annual basis. So, that's one of those impacts that affects the city with future development also.
But the timing of that can be mitigated a bit, such as the obligation of Lake Pleasant Heights to build their public safety facilities, until which time we would have had the population to build it ourselves, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, finally, in summary, this is a graphic just to show you where all the single-family residential citywide over the next five years. So, this is a summary of where all that development that we project to occur. This shows you the area south of Bell. So, it presumes 8,000 units over the next five years. So, that is consistent with the 1,600 permits on average per year that we showed you earlier. That's what that results in. And you can see the projected population of 21,600. We put in a figure for miscellaneous to reach that 8,000-unit count. We don't know where those units occur, and we know that over the next five years, new projects are going to pop up. So, we'll, but we think there will be others that pop up. We think that'll be the scale of the number that we'll see. So, finally, in completion, there are, as we indicated earlier, there's going to be a lot of considerations that we'll need to discuss relative to growth, a lot of growth-related considerations. What I think will be really important is that we continue to nurture and build upon the community identity. So, as we grow further to the north, of course, we're a large expansive city. Somehow, we need to do it in a fashion that all parties feel like they're a part of the city, that we have amenities that are available citywide, and so that we need to nurture that community identity so there isn't a sense of different segments of the city. Also, from a service delivery standpoint, that's going to be real important. We talked about how growth has an impact on, of course, refuse, collection, public safety. And programmatically, what we're going to offer, whether it's our park facilities or other facilities citywide, so growth always has an effect on service delivery. And then, we talked about how financing growth is going to be a big decision point for us going forward. We talked about Lake Pleasant Heights and what our policy might be for CFDs and impact fees and how the recent legislation has had an effect on our impactful collection and the ability to fund new infrastructure. So, impact fees, over the next year, there's a study that's going on that will, to determine what the next rates will be for the impact fee model. So, that'll be a topic of consideration and also, as we have every year as part of the budget, the Capital Improvement Plan as well. And then, finally, the fourth objective is the external factors. Those are the intangibles that come up with growth and everything from, how are we going to preserve our economic development corridors as new development occurs? We have to make sure that we're on point on that, that we're not, opportunities aren't leaving us and we're taking advantage of those opportunities. How are we going to preserve open space? And we make sure that when development occurs, it occurs in a manner that's responsible, that we protect those areas that are important to the city, that provide the city with its personality and also balances that with growth opportunities. Affordability is going to be an important issue as we go north to make sure that there are still opportunities for other income segments, whether they're teachers, whether they're technicians, other segments of the population, so they don't have to drive great distances to reach job centers. And then, how do we make sure that we, as we grow, we continue to build on a vibrant and engaged community? How do we take Peoria to the next level, if you will, and continue to make this the livable place that it has been and has been recognized for?
Well, Sid, all of this kind of rolls up into that livability discussion, and there's a lot of components of livability. And I think that's one of the things that we're going to talk to you about moving forward is, there's a reason that people are moving to Peoria and that home values are what they are. It's because of the livability and the quality of life of Peoria. So, how do we maintain that and with these issues that we're going to have to address that we haven't had to address before moving forward? So, those are the discussions. That's why we wanted to tee this up. There's going to be future discussion. But thank you, Chris, for starting off the conversation.
Council, any comments? Yes, Mr. Patanna.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question further up north. I know that three or four years ago, there was some talk about, or conversation about a high-end hotel going out on the banks of the lake. Have those conversations died and is there any truth to that?
Councilmember Patanna, members of the council, I think that was a pre-app we might have had a few years ago, but that idea hasn't materialized. So, there's no current case.
But we do have a resort study, an infrastructure study for a resort at Lake Pleasant. We're currently wrapping up that report. There's a cost estimation that's going to go with that so that we understand what the impacts of the infrastructure requirements for a resort, for different variations of a resort at Lake Pleasant. And we have key partners in the county parks department as well as Trune Properties who manage the Scorpion Bay up there. So, we're working with them. We intend to have that report wrapped up in November. And then, we will have to evaluate how to move forward with that study and what that means as far as a resort at the lake. One of the things that we want to look at moving forward also is what kind of hospitality as far as hotels and resorts that we feel that there's probably a market for additional resorts or hotels in North Peoria. So, we may have a study that goes beyond just the Lake Pleasant area as far as for a resort. And maybe there's another area that is more likely for a resort to develop in the near future. So, we may come back to council in the future to request funding to further a study in that area also.
Yes. We have talked about, you know, how beautiful the topography is and certain corners throughout the city, particularly to the north, where so much is, where there's still so much open space and undeveloped areas. Is there a way in the general plan or anything that exists that would allow us to protect certain corners so that it's limited to only particular kinds of commercial development? So, or I guess restricted, no gas station or no, I can't think of anything else, but...
Mayor Carl, Councilmember Binsbacher, that's an excellent question. And certainly, there are a couple of ways we're going to address that. Number one, when we talked about the general plan and refining land uses, we're going to have a much more, a plan that's much more reflective of the topography. So, for example, any land that's above a 15% slope, we call those a hillside area, is going to have a park open space land use designation. So, that holds those lands in kind of a less intense form. And kind of a compatible part with that is our hillside ordinance, which doesn't allow a lot of development. The higher up you go on a slope allows less development. And there's an incentive that's built into the hillside ordinance that says, okay, if you take that allowance for development that's upslope and you bring that downslope, will give you, will allow you to transfer that credit downslope so that you can build the flatter areas and preserve the higher-up areas. But certainly, I think those two tools in tandem will help us do that.
Any other questions? Well, this was a really informative conversation. I appreciate it, and I look forward to the difficult conversations that we have ahead of us that have to do with the various kinds of CFDs that we can put in place, different ways that we can utilize impact fees, all of the things that we need to know that are going to give us the edge that we need in making the kinds of decisions that we have to make to allow our city to grow and be the best that it can be as we move forward. It's a really, really important time in the city of Peoria, and it's a very important time for all of us to be able to know as much as we can know so that we can make really informed decisions. So, thank you for this. It really helps. Anything else, Jeff? All right, then. With that, we are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting.
We are the students of Gallery 37, and you're watching MCTV. Restaurant owner Eddie Hauntis is fulfilling his dream of serving food that reflects his love and passion for the meals he grew up eating. The native of Lebanon chose Scottsdale Community College's Culinary Arts Program to prepare him for the industry. Jonathan Nigera has the story.
Eddie Hauntis already had opened and closed his own restaurant when he decided to go through Scottsdale Community College's Culinary Arts Program in 2011. He wanted to expand his culinary skillset and open a restaurant that reflected his passion for the Mediterranean food he grew up eating in Lebanon.
Really, the inspiration was that, just the desire to share something that was really dear to me that I ate and the cuisine that was around growing up.
On the menu at Hummus Express, which he opened in 2012, you'll find falafel, pita, tzatziki, fresh veggies, and traditional meats. It's a far cry from the pizza deli food he served in his first venture. And his instinct and research led him to believe the valley was ready for a casual dining experience with this type of food.
There to be different, and that's why we did here, Hummus Express, where we definitely set out to be different from the beginning.
That gut instinct... That gut instinct coupled with savvy business skills seem to be working. Customers start arriving from 10:00 AM right through the afternoon. He recently added a food truck to his business, a popular lunchtime eatery in South Tempe. Hontas does caution that being a small business owner is not for the faint-hearted.
It's about having almost like an obsession to succeed in the first year. You have to be really obsessed about the idea of getting to your goal.
After closing his first restaurant in 2011, he took a trip back to Lebanon to visit his family and rejuvenate his soul. He came back ready to realize his dream and chose SCC's Culinary Arts Program over Le Cordon Bleu. He has never regretted it.
It just clicked with me. I'm like, I need to go here and it was one of the best decisions I ever took.
Hontas' success has made his SCC instructors proud.
When you see the connection going full circle like that from meeting somebody, getting to know what drives them, and then they go out there and make it happen, that's why we're here.
Hontas hopes his success will inspire others and he's always willing to lend a helping hand.
I'm very blessed to have a friend like Eddie. He's a great mentor and a great, just somebody I can say, hey, this broke down. What did you do? And they'll be like, oh, here, let me send you a guy.
If you're not authentic, all the success and all the awards don't mean anything.
Reporting for Maricopa Now, I'm Jonathan Iggy.
Gateway Community College partnered with the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce to host a tour of the campus' welding, construction, and manufacturing programs. The Chamber's Construction Workforce Collaborative brings construction professionals and community partners together to fill workforce needs.
The number one issue facing Arizona companies is the inability to find qualified talent for their respective positions.
We believe that any of the solutions that you need can be found or can be created or will be created at the community colleges.
According to the Chamber, there are 10,000 construction industry job openings in Arizona with an average pay of $49,000 per year. The Arizona Advanced Manufacturing Institute Boot Camp brought high school students to Mesa Community College to speak their interest in manufacturing careers.
I've always been interested in mechanics and stuff like this and I'm just trying to figure out what I'm going to do.
We have created this booth camp, which is in a summer for a student, a very short-term, high-intensity opportunity for them to get college credit and to be their first step into a pathway towards a degree and certificate.
The program helps bridge the skills gap created by new jobs due to advanced technology and those created by baby boomers retiring from the field, Palmer says.
3D printing, robotics, machinery that has programming and technology and conversational software. This is the new manufacturing.
Scottsdale Community College's Fitness and Wellness Center is open. Students and community members can register for credit and non-credit classes throughout the year. More than 40 group exercise classes are offered. For more information, call or visit this address. The culinary restaurants at the campuses are now open too. Student chefs prepare three and five-course menus as part of their training. For reservations or more information, call or visit this address.
They call me Maxie, but I prefer a tripod. I was your above-average four-legged homie and then wham-bam minivan. Some people pity me. Now that's lame. I still run, fetch, and swim. And the ladies love me. I'm the ultimate wingman. Just don't ask me to high-five.
Thank you. You got a key?
Go fish.
It only takes a moment to make a moment. Take time to be a dad today.
An instrument with a sound similar to the human voice. The cello has captured the emotions of listeners with its deep majestic tone since the first half of the 16th century. An instrument important to the music of the Baroque, Classical, and Romantic eras, the cello has also been used by modern artists. Artist Yoyo Ma, a Chinese-American who graduated from Juilliard, has helped garner in a new area of appreciation for the cello today. Cello instructor Ruth Wagner shares her passion for the art form of cello with students here at Scottsdale Community College. Welcome to Spirit of the Arts. I'm your host, Andrea Zakszewski.
I have been playing the cello for over two decades now. I started when I was seven and I first started actually on violin when I was much younger. What I love about the cello is how comprehensive it is in my mind, both in sound and in general versatility of music I get to play. In sound, I think it's such a beautiful instrument that is so close to the human voice.
Wagner received her bachelor and master's degrees in cello performance at Arizona State University and is principal cellist in the West Valley Symphony. She's committed to serving the community through the arts and has co-produced several performances across the valley. She enjoys helping others to learn to play the cello. Ruth teaches individual and group lessons, which are open to all levels that can read music and have had exposure to the cello. Once she gauges your level, she will design a program and pick pieces that can be adapted to you. She suggests playing on a cello that complements your technique. Karen is taking her group class and likes how Wagner helps her with intonation and staying in tune.
Oh, I didn't pause.
I'll play the downbeat.
Okay. She's very mindful of all the details, but yet she stays very calm and patient and optimistic that you're going to get there.
These students are preparing for a performance and have already completed their technique building. The piece they're playing is written for a choir and Ruth will teach them how to adapt it to cello.
In that particular piece, it was, I mean, it's a choral piece, so there are breath marks in there for when a choir sings, they have to take a breath, right? And our bow is our breath.
Students will learn the importance of touch. Make sure your bow is perpendicular to the fingerboard. Use the weight of your arm to pass slightly against the string. The bow should flow.
I think it makes really beautiful music, is very soulful and can bring out just a lot of emotion and feeling.
For only $76 a semester, you can learn the cello and play classical, jazz, or rock music of today. Karen would like to continue taking classes and progress with her music. Ruth Wagner's teaching helps to elevate the cello as an art form, make her work and her students, such as Karen's, continue to inspire current and future cellists. Ruth teaches beginning, intermediate, and advanced cello classes in group and individual instruction. Art students continue to seek out classes in the Maricopa Community Colleges, such as Scottsdale Community College, for superior instruction by highly-trained professors who are passionate about the arts. If you were inspired by Ruth Wagner's instruction, perhaps you might consider taking classes. For more information, go to scottsdalecc.edu. Thanks for joining us on this edition of Spirit of the Arts. I'm Andrea Zakszewski.
Two Phoenix College alums and Vietnam veterans have created works of art that celebrate their Hispanic heritage. Their most recent design features a mural that celebrates the achievements of children with cerebral palsy. Jesús Hernández has the story.
José Andrés Giron is a Vietnam Purple Heart recipient with a passion for producing art that reflects his cultural roots.
It's a beautiful culture, our cultura. It is filled with beautiful things to paint and draw. And what better thing to paint, to me, than your culture and your family?
Ramon Reyes believes his cultural style provides him the opportunity to explore new ideas and educate people.
It's all about enhancing life. It's all about making people appreciate what's out there, making people communicate and talk.
Among the many cultural projects Giron and Reyes have collaborated on is a mural in an alley in downtown Phoenix. Their vision was to create a window, a glimpse into Hispanic history with a taste of the flavor of the Southwest.
A lot of the images in the alley are Cesar Chavez, Huerta, a lot of the musical people, Santana, Lalo Guerrero, and it just goes on and on.
We wanted to depict historic images and positive images so that the general public can see that as they walk through that alley.
Their most recent work is a mural conveying a message of hope, love, and compassion for the children helped by the United Cerebral Palsy of Central Arizona.
You see the little girl and the butterfly, the butterfly coming out. Our daughter came out and became who she is and was a beautiful sight to everybody that knows her.
Every year, the United Cerebral Palsy of Central Arizona helps some 5,000 children and adults with different disabilities. Their mural was made possible with funding from Circle K. For Ramon Reyes, the work on the mural had a special meaning. His son, now a college student, was helped by UCP.
As I paint that mural, I think of him, you know? I think of the, all the hardships that he went through, that we went through in order to get him to be accepted.
We just try to bring out those positive images for disabled children, you know? Children with disabilities.
Creating the imagery for this mural was a delicate process for the artists. It required long summer hours in the Arizona heat. Giron and Reyes feel privileged to have been part of the creation of the mural. They're proud of their cultural contributions and would like others to embrace the message of hope and love. Jesús Hernández for Maricopa Now.
Stay with us. We've got a new recipe coming up on Chef's Menu.
All right, welcome to our kitchen. Today, we're going to make for you a fish in poppy oat. Basically, what that is, is cooking fish in a parchment or in paper. You can actually cook in banana leaves, you can cook in corn husk, basically whatever it is to encase the fish and so it can steam. So today, we're going to make some compound butter using butter, some garlic, shallots, parsley, salt, pepper, and white wine. Purpose of using a compound butter is basically you get a lot of your seasonings in there and put it on top of the fish so as it's cold and it starts to steam, it actually melts down and it takes longer to infuse and incorporate the flavors into your dish. Once you got it incorporated, you're going to take it to a parchment paper or you can use plastic wrap, whatever you're comfortable with. Basically, put it right in the center and you're going to form it into a cylinder. Wrap it up nice and tight. Spread it out, get a nice cylinder going. Once you get to that point, put it in the refrigerator, let it cool and harden. So your next step is getting your parchment ready or if you're going to use banana leaves or whatever, your corn husk. What you're going to do is you're going to cut your parchment paper, you're going to fold it and cut it into kind of like a heart shape like you did when you're a kid doing craft paper. Once you get to that step, you're going to get your vegetables ready, put that in the bottom, and you're going to start with some bell peppers, some squash. We've got some zucchini, we've got some yellow crook neck squash, some carrots, and some Julian leeks. Once you get to this point, you're going to get your fish. In this case, we're using a Pacific cod. You can use any firm white fish at this point. If you find out what kind of fish you want to use, you could do the Monterey Bay seafood watch. And what that is, is basically it lets you know any fish that's being caught, farmed responsibly. In this case, if you didn't want to use cod, you could use halibut. And you look on the safety watch, the halibut will actually tell you to avoid Atlantic wild cod because we've overfished and dropped the levels to where it's not sustainable and most restaurants in the country will not use it. So once you get to this point, a little bit of salt, season it with pepper, a couple cuts of lemon. Put that right on top, your dill, and a little bit of compound butter. Put that right on top. At this point, you're going to wrap your parchment. If you've done pastry, it's pretty easy to do. If you haven't done pastry, basically all you want to do is fold it in tight, fold, fold, fold it all the way around. Once you get to the end, you want to fold that over and just twist. Perfect, just like that. With that, we're going to put it in the oven. Now that it's been cooked, we're going to plate it up, just slide it right off onto the plate. So traditionally, it's plated with the parchment on top of it. And when you open it up, you should be able to see the steam coming out of it with a perfectly cooked piece of fish. There you go. As you have it, you have the fish on top, you have your perfectly cooked steamed veggies underneath, and it's a meal all in one pouch.
Chef's Menu is brought to you by the Sustainable Food Systems Program at Rio Salado College. For today's recipe, please visit this address.
I see the future is really bright for me. The high school diploma is just added to the confidence and now I feel unstoppable.
Find free adult education classes near you at finishyourdiploma.org. Scientists and student astronomers took advantage of the recent historic solar eclipse to capture data about the sun and its properties and get kids excited about science. Deanne Kincaid brings us the story from the viewing party at Mesa Community College.
The recent solar eclipse transfixed stargazers and scientists alike whether they used a high-powered telescope or an ordinary cereal box viewer. Mesa Community College, together with its astronomy department, hosted a viewing party open to the public.
The moon passes in between the earth and the sun so that the moon's shadow falls on the spot on the earth where we happen to be standing right now.
For many, it was a once-in-a-lifetime experience and was dubbed "The Great American Solar Eclipse."
This one happens to cross the entire continental US with a path of totality.
It was scientifically significant because it provided a unique opportunity to observe the sun's corona, which is ordinarily obscured by the sun's blinding light.
We can measure the rotation velocity of the earth, the size and distance of the moon, the speed of light, and an eclipse has even been used to prove Einstein's General Theory of Relativity.
Those 500 viewers were shared among the more than 2,000 people who showed up. Parents and teachers said they brought youngsters to this event as a way of inspiring them to study the sciences in the future.
We've always wanted to see solar eclipse. And the next one's going to be 2024, so we are really excited to see it today.
Children got help making a viewer by poking a pinhole in a piece of paper.
This is my first eclipse.
Some brought their own telescopes for others to enjoy.
Wow.
Even the MCC mascot, Thunderbird, protected his eyes by using the solar viewer. I'm Deanne Kincaid for Maricopa Now. I'm Deanne Kincaid for Maricopa Now.
Researchers say understanding the nature of the sun is key to unlocking the mysteries of the universe. Keep those viewing glasses handy for the next solar eclipse in 2024. And that's our show. I hope you've enjoyed it. Be sure to stay tuned to MCTV for our great lineup of shows, including Inside Maricopa Sports and Infocay and TuFuturo. Also, check out our website at maricopa.edu/mctv and click on Destube. Destube allows you to watch this show and all of our regularly produced programs anytime you wish. Until next time, take care.
Don't touch that remote. MCTV has more great programming coming right up. Join MCTV every day for Inside Maricopa Sports, Infocay and TuFuturo, and our daily community calendar update, Campus Calendar.
I'm Officer Brendan Shepherd with the Peoria Police Department. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And part of being aware is understanding that this problem really does affect every community, regardless of age, race, economic class, or gender. Why victims stay, fear of increased violence, frequency and severity, lack of financial resources, isolation, cultural beliefs, and prior history of abuse and low self-esteem. The Peoria Police Department is committed to ending domestic violence. If you or someone you know is being affected by domestic violence, there is help. You can contact the Peoria Police Department at 623-773-8311 or the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-7233.
My style as an artist, I use a lot of collage. My name is D. Roy Brubaker. I was born and raised in Peoria. Currently, right now, I am a art teacher slash swim coach, and then I'm working on my master's in secondary education. So these are all handmade. The reason why they're on the floor is so when I'm dripping all the paint on top of this, it's becoming part of these paintings. It's called the Dreaming Project. First was the dreaming of a cheeseburger. It's not, yeah. There's nothing about me not having a job. All it says is stay, man. I'm dreaming of a cheeseburger. We did a show to raise money for the homeless here in Phoenix, especially on the west side and Peoria and Glendale area. And then I wanted to go international, so Dreaming of a Well came about. I found an organization called Global Che Enterprises. And we went to San Juan, Guatemala, and we built a well in a week for the Ma'am people, who are the direct descendants of the Mayans. It costs about $3,000 for a well. So we have helped out 210 to 300 people. And this is generational too, so this is not just a one-time thing. The woman that we built a well for, she was part of the village. She's 48 years old, never had running water. She's never had a well, she's never cleaned water, it's always been rain catch. So for 48 years of her life, that's how she, that's how she got water. I had to take a step back when she was telling her story. You know, I had to walk away a little bit and be like, you know what? And when I get home, I can just turn on the faucet and that's it. Wash my hands, take a shower, take a hot shower in clean water. The art comes into this as a voice for the Ma'am people. The show is at the Herd Museum, October 21st, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. It's in the Steel Auditorium. What I want to create is you walking in the streets of Shalala. The goal is to obviously sell the art. People donate so we can build more wells because there's 12 villages, just like the one that I just left, that are waiting for a well. For one night, the Herd Museum turns into Guatemala.
Good morning and welcome to today's STEM Pro Live. My name is Marlis with the Maricopa County Education Service Agency, and I'm here today at Intel Corporation in Chandler with Elise, who works here at Intel, and Rebecca Coda from Littleton Elementary District, who some of you might recognize.
Welcome one to ones. We're so excited you're joining us today. And make sure you are creating those good questions and having your teacher submit those so that they can answer them throughout.
Perfect. Awesome. Yeah, be thinking of those questions. I'll be on the other side of the chat room so I can see those as they're coming in and be collecting them to ask near to the end of today's STEM Pro Live to ask Elise and have her answer. But now I'm going to turn it over to Elise to talk about what she does here at Intel and what Intel does in general. If you haven't heard of Intel, I think you're going to recognize a lot of the products that they create and how they're part of a lot of what you're probably doing day to day. So I'll turn it over now to Elise. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you very much for the introduction.
Awesome.
Hi, thank you guys for signing in. I'm very excited to talk to you about what I do as an engineer here at Intel and what Intel does as a corporation. So many of you may not know, but Intel creates microprocessors. Microprocessors are the brains of your computer. They power everything from your smartphone all the way to the big servers that do complex analytics for places like NASA. We start off our manufacturing process, we create these wafers here that have hundreds of die on them. Now, at the end of the process, they actually get cut up into tiny little die. So each of those hundreds of little die get cut off and then they get put into a package. So this is our atom processor right here. So that's the tiny little Intel die that we make. This green stuff right below is a substrate, which we'll talk about later because I have a lot to do with that. And then this overall is the package. So it's got all the connects that you would put in. This is an atom processor, for instance, but you can see how small this is in comparison to how big some of our server products are up here. We've come a long way. Intel powers, like I said, everything from very tiny devices to very large devices. We also do some storage. I just wanted to show you guys, 15 years ago, this was a hard drive and it weighs a lot and it was 42 megabytes. That's, you could fit about five songs on here. And nowadays, 15 years later, we make 120 gig hard drives. It's very lightweight, very small form factor, there's no moving parts inside. And this can store hundreds of thousands of songs on it. So you can see what technology has done in the last 15 years and what Intel has enabled. I'd like to walk you guys through some of the demo room that we're in today in the Chandler facility to kind of show you the different products that Intel is able to enable. Come on with me. So this is a car infotainment system. So many of you may have cars that have like a GPS screen where your parents are able to control the radio and do different things on it. But maybe in the back of your headrest, there are video monitors where you're able to watch DVDs, for instance. Intel enables that. They actually can process three different screens at once, two screens that show the same thing. So the two screens in the back of your headrest that actually show the same video. This is from Korea, this is in the Kia K9, so that's what the Koreans on here for. We actually send a prototype board to our developers. So this is the overall infotainment. This is your AM/FM tuner that you're familiar with. But the Intel board is actually on the back, so it's a lot smaller. They can actually work to create the technology that they need to enable this. And then, once they've figured out what they want to do, we actually send them the real board, which is much smaller. And this can get just plugged into the car. So if you wanted to upgrade your infotainment system at some point, you just pop this in and pop it out. It's really straightforward. But you know, you're probably familiar with this system and we enable things like this. I'd also like to show you the Google car. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the Google Smart Car. So that's the car that they've created that's autonomous driving. There's no driver in the car. It actually has a camera that sticks up out of the top. You may have seen it drive around before. And it's got a feed that's taking in video from all around the car and processing that data real time. So if you look at the video, there's little specks of light, looks like there's like little pieces of paper flying around. And that's actually the different points of light that the car is actually processing to make sure that it's not going to run into any vehicles or, you know, it's obeying the traffic laws. And this is all enabled because of Intel technology. We have the ability, we've made our microprocessors so fast and so smart that they can process hundreds and thousands of data points at a time to enable this kind of technology. So we're really kind of changing the world with what we're able to create. Another thing I wanted to show you is, I think you may have seen that some of the new restaurants, they have these point-of-sale systems where you can actually like order, you click on it, you can order food right from your table. You don't have to have your waitress come by. And at the end, you're able to actually swipe your card and not wait for anyone. We actually are powering this technology for Applebee's as well as a bunch of other retailers. So changing your eating experience out at restaurants. This display here is actually a glasses-less 3D TV. So it actually, depending on where you're standing, you can see a 3D image. And there is no glasses that are needed for this. It's actually based on Intel technology that processes the different signals. So that when you are looking at it, your brain is getting two different signals like you would if you were wearing the 3D glasses. And then you actually see a 3D image. The TV here is a very special technology. It's actually about $30,000 for this TV alone. So we're, you know, this is all very much prototype-type stuff that you guys are getting to see. But we're really enabling all kinds of different technology that you are familiar with. And the last demo I want to show you is over here. So this is our audience impression matrix. It actually is, you would never see this, but if you had like some signage at a store, they may have a camera in it that actually captures who's looking at it. And they're able to see based on, it's going to try to figure out, okay, I'm a girl. That's what the pink means, it's figured out that I'm a woman. And then based on what it sees, it's going to start showing me a different commercial. So because I'm female, it's showing me shampoo, they're beauty products. This is just all, you know, demos right now. If I was a guy, this is set up to show you a car. If there's a mix of men and women, it'll show you a water commercial. And then it actually is able to track how long you're actually watching the advertisement so that the marketers are able to determine how effective their marketing is based on how long you are captured by this. Now, you would never see any of this information displayed. They would just show you the different advertisements, but they'd be collecting data in the background. And it is all anonymized, so don't get freaked out. If I walk away and come back, it treats me as a different person. It doesn't know that I'm the same person who's come here and come back. So we're able to actually help retailers be a lot more effective in what they do. So those are the different demos I wanted to show you guys. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Arizona. I went to Cactus High School where I actually had some Intel engineers come out to my math class. And they started talking about, this was back in 2003, how they thought wireless would be everywhere in the world someday. And that was Intel's vision. And I was just blown away, like I couldn't even imagine that at the time, like nobody had wireless. And I was like, I want to work for Intel. I knew I kind of wanted to be an engineer, but that totally solidified it for me. So I actually went to Intel's Chip Camp, where I learned how microprocessors are made and just had a fabulous time. And I stayed involved with Intel ever since then. I did two internships. I got my bachelor's degree in computer engineering from the University of Arizona. And then I started up full-time at Intel as the Rotation Engineers Program. I worked initially in the fab in the defect metrology, which basically means I'm a quality police. I would make sure that the factory was running cleanly. And then I would make people take down their tools and fix their issues if they had problems. I'd give them like tickets, you know, quality tickets. And I would totally get dressed up in the bunny suit every day. So you see in the ads where you can only see like this much of a person's face and they look like a white ninja, like that's what I looked like every day. But I decided to get my master's degree in industrial engineering. So I went on a nine-month leave of absence from Intel and got that from ASU. And then when I came back, I started working in the substrates world. So remember that green stuff I was pointing to before that first thing? I worked to help make sure that we get the right amount of that. I help us make better decisions and save us money in the long term. So that's my story. Yep, we had, I've had a great time here at Intel, some of my favorite things is I get to work on really complicated problems. I get to work with people all around the world. A lot of my teammates are in Japan and Taiwan. So that's wonderful that I get exposed to all these different cultures. I actually just came back from Taiwan a couple of weeks ago. But it's really a fantastic opportunity. I get to kind of decide what I do. And that's a little bit about me.
Very cool. Well, I'm ready to start with the question and answer session. So I'll go ahead and toss Elise a few questions and keep questions coming in over the chat room. And yeah, we'll get them answered. So first off, what courses would you suggest kids take to be able to do what you do today or do something similar working here at Intel?
So I think any math and science courses you can take will only help you out. Getting exposure to programming, even if you don't want to be a programmer, is critical. Like as, even if you're doing something different in engineering, you're going to have to do a little bit of programming. So getting that kind of exposure early on will help you. But the important thing is, I didn't have any of that. I took some advanced math classes in high school, but I learned everything in college. So you don't have to worry about being behind. You can, you can definitely do it in college. But you can give yourself a leg up by getting started early.
Awesome. And you mentioned that you just got back from a trip. How often do you travel and for what and where?
I don't get to travel as often as some of my peers because I'm improving the systems and tools that help us make better decisions. So I can do that from Arizona just as easily as I could anywhere else. Two years ago, I got to go to Japan to see my teammates. And sometimes I get to go to Oregon, we've got headquarters in Oregon and Santa Clara. And so sometimes we have an actual Intel shuttle. So we have a plane that you can get on, you just show your badge, you reserve a ticket, but there's no security. You just walk onto the corporate jet and fly away.
Nice, very cool. And you said you get to kind of be in charge of your own schedule. Do you have, does your day-to-day schedule kind of stay consistent? Do you have, does your day-to-day schedule kind of stay consistent or does it just change every day? What does that kind of look like?
I have a lot of flexibility over my own schedule. The nice thing about working here is, you know, I have to be available for meetings, but I'm an adult, they trust me to get my work done. So I typically get in about 8 o'clock and then I'm done either 5 or 6 p.m. Like I said, I work with Asia a lot, so 4 p.m. our time is 8 a.m. their time, so 4 to 6 p.m. is a prime time for meetings that we have. But, you know, I've had doctor's appointments where I leave and it's fine, so I have a lot of flexibility. And I typically, I get to work from home on Fridays as I go off to some high schools and do some mentoring there. So there's a lot of flexibility with that schedule.
Awesome. And what do you like most about your job?
I like that I get to solve tough problems. You know, most of the problems that I face are things that people couldn't figure out before me, and I'm here to give it a different viewpoint. You know, I look at the problem differently, I poll people and get teammates involved, and we come up with a solution, and we solve a problem that's never been solved before, and that feeling is so addictive to get to work on these problems and make a difference.
Awesome. And what's the most challenging part of your job?
The most challenging part of my job can be meeting with a different time zone. So if there's something critical that happens, you have to be available to have those meetings later at night. In general, I'm able to manage my schedule, but if, you know, something catastrophic were to happen, I'd have to be available. So, it takes a lot of work to do, but it's totally doable.
Awesome. And what do you think is the coolest thing you've worked on here at Intel? There's a particular product or just a challenge that you were, I don't know, especially excited to be able to complete?
So we had, you guys probably aren't aware, but a couple years ago, there was a Cougar Point issue with one of the products that we had, and we had like all heads down trying to figure out how we could get more product out of the factory. So, when I used to work in the factory, you know, there'd be a little bit of a tug of war between us and the process engineers who wanted to run product through their tool and my group who wanted to make sure it was good quality. But at that time, we were all focused on one goal, and we came up with really crazy out-of-the-box ideas of how we could keep our quality high but get our die out the door to meet our customer demands so that there was no impact. At the end of the day, customers had no idea what had happened, there was no impact to them, but it was, it was a really invigorating time and the reward at the end, it was unbelievable.
Awesome. And did you have teachers or mentors, either, well, you mentioned specifically in high school when Intel came out to visit there, but yeah, just individuals who really helped guide you in your career and into what you're doing today?
I had, my fifth grade teacher told me, because I was good at math and science, I should be an engineer, and I kind of just took it at face value, like, great, I'll be an engineer, and I didn't really think about what that was. Nowadays, we have the internet and you have things like STEM Pro Live where you actually can do research and understand what engineers do to see if it is for you. And so I applaud you guys for being exposed to these different career fields. After that, I did have Yael, who was by, I had been introduced to when she came to my high school from Intel, and she and I still are in contact. But in general, like I didn't have the opportunity to have anyone in a similar field to talk to very regularly about this. My parents hadn't gone to college, so it was very much on my own. And one of the things I had that I wanted to make sure you guys know is that when you go to college, no matter what degree you end up choosing, you will have those moments where you'll have that self-doubt, like, did I go to the right thing? Can I do this? Am I fooling myself? And that's totally normal, it just means that you're thinking. You can get through it, like so many people before you have done it. And, you know, I didn't have that, but I want to make sure that you guys are aware that you can get through those moments, and, you know, at the end, life is so awesome. Once you've got your degree and your job and you're in control of your destiny, it's fantastic.
Awesome. That is definitely true, I second that. And is this your first job here at Intel? Or how, and along with that, how long have you worked here and kind of what internships or jobs did you have in between college and?
So I've only ever worked at Intel. I started out as an intern here, and I did two internships, I did the Rotation Engineers Program. I've actually had, this is my seventh job at Intel, there's a lot of movement at Intel. So the nice thing is, you know, my bachelor's is in computer engineering, my master's is in industrial engineering, but I can kind of go a lot of different places. There are some segments you have to have very specific training, but being able to say I'm an engineer proves that I can work on teams and solve hard problems, and so people want me on their team to work with them. So, I've been here seven or eight years at this point. I did have sabbatical this last October, so I didn't tell every seven years you get eight weeks paid vacation in addition to your regular vacation. And so my friend and I that were interns together.
The mayor and city council welcome you to the Peoria City Council Meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council Chambers or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the City Council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms are received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council Meeting.
Peoria City Council Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Youth Council Liaison Acosta.
...to the fight of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Benzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Finn. Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leone.
Here.
Council Liaison Acosta.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting of October 17th, 2017. The first item on the agenda this evening is presentation of certificates to newly appointed boards and commission members, and I would like to ask Councilmember Bill Patana to join me in the front for the presentation. Councilmember Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. I am not, no longer the chair of the Boards and Commissions Committee. Mike Finn is, but he's not present today, so we asked if I would step in for him. I just want to say, we appreciate, we have, we have over 105 volunteers right now that help our city out, and more than 20 boards and commissions, and so we appreciate the gift of time that the people give us and making sure that, I mean, they're all, they all know what they're doing in their special area, so we really do appreciate that. So today, we're going to welcome, I think, two more people to our Boards and Commissions. One person with two awards. So when I call your name, would you come on down? Patrick Sells, Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Local Fire Board. Patrick Sells, Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Local Police Board. That's you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is another presentation. This is Christmas for the troops, and I would like to invite to the podium Rochelle Barrett and Bob Barrett. This is our former mayor, Bob Barrett, in case you don't know. We welcome you back to the dais and the podium and the microphone.
Some things never change. For the record, I'm Rochelle Barrett. I live at 14523 North 90th Lane in Peoria, and I have the privilege of representing the Peoria Sunset Lions as their president this year, and I get to talk about Christmas for the troops again. This year, I thought I would do a little less about the troops and a little more about the community we built doing this project, but I read something online from one of the soldiers today, and I just have to talk about the first time in all the years we've done this, we've never had soldiers really talk much about morale problems. This year, we are just rife with people with morale problems, and I have a strange feeling that a lot of that has to come from us with all the bickering and the arguing and the name-calling we're doing at home with all the divisiveness we have going on in this country right now. It must be really hard for a soldier to feel like we're a united group supporting them. It's got to feel like no one's got their back. They're asking actually for Christmas decorations this year. It doesn't very often happen. They still need, oh, yeah, they still need the cliff bars, they still need the jerky. Jerky and cliff bars are huge issues. No more white socks, please, no more white socks. But brown and black calf-length socks are now in big demand, and I think I told most of you last year how they were doing their own laundry because they can't trust the services, the laundry services. The underwear and socks don't come back from the laundry services. And after talking to a mother of a soldier that just got back, I realized that the reason is that most of the in-country forces are issued one uniform, one complete uniform, which means one pair of socks and one pair of underwear. So we have created this amazing black market for underwear and socks in Kuwait. If you want to start a second business, guys, I've got a really good idea for you. Presently, we have about 25,000 troops deployed overseas. Last year, we managed to spend, send 317 boxes, a total cost of just over $5,000 in postage. And then the Lions put in another 1,200 of nothing but cliff bars. Big, big item, because they carry their own protein with them so often, the way troops are deployed now, they don't come back to mess areas. Meals do not happen at set times, they're working 24 hours a day. A lot of them are 24-hour shifts. They're showering two and three times a day because of the conditions they're in, so they're going through clothing and snacks and food a lot. But, the really great thing about is that the situation over there doesn't change a lot for them. Let me start this. But at home, we've managed to build this community of volunteers. This last year, when we were packing, we had Lions, the City of Peoria people, the friends of the public library, but a group of veterans, two Girl Scout troops, a Brownie troop, the Congressional Church of Sun City, a group of homeschooled families, Centennial High School Student Councils, and the COGS Communication Team, all besides the Peoria volunteers from the families here, Sun City, surprise, Glendale, and one from Al Mirage. We have built a community to support these guys, and that's what these kids are. This is one of the groups... The right button. Oh, you mean my other right? Oh, that right, okay. This is homeschool kids. The first one was a Brownie group. There were lots of these pictures that were very cute, standing there doing their very best to take a proper picture, so I chose all the ones that weren't proper. This is the council, City Student Council kids that, from Centennial, that came to help pack. We had a bunch of stuff that was tiny, small things. They got plastic bags, put together shampoo and deodorant and toothpaste in Ziploc bags. We had a bunch of water sitting there, they said, is this for anybody? We said, yeah, so they ended up putting it in the plastic bags. They were making homeless bags, all on their own. This country's going to do fine, the kids are great. This is another group of homeschooled kids. I think you recognize a couple of these girls here. But that little tiny reindeer in the middle, she's four years old, she had such a great time, she asked us if she could come back and do it again tomorrow. COGS volunteers, this is the third year that they've been with us, this is their, we've become their charity of choice. And one of their members also belongs to Alliance Club, and he's gotten one of his members to donate the U-Haul truck to us that now carries those 300 and some odd packages to the post office and the post office. And the post office now lets us store the stuff on-site. They run all of the boxes for us, call us and say, "Okay, come on down with your credit card." So we don't have to stand in line for 24 hours anymore mailing overseas boxes. This is a church group from Congressional in Sun City. I really wanted to let you know that this was the offshoot of what happens when you don't know what's happening. This is what synergy is. This is what building community is about. This is what makes the West Valley such a great place, and you guys, without your help, we can't do it. This is the same little girl who's changed head covers. She went from her ears to the Santa Claus hat because she was hiding from her mom. She didn't want to go home. These are just teachers from the homeschool situation. They had brought in a couple of teenagers with them that were part of the homeschool is that they have to do volunteer hours too, so just, they picked our cause last year, which we were happy for. All those white socks, but no more this year. They were giving them away, we realized, to the troops that are non-US troops that are over there. But now they're saying, they've been restricted from doing that, they can't do that anymore. They need their brown and black socks. This little one couldn't figure out whether she was coming or going. And Christmas cards, the one thing they begged for was Christmas cards. So if you belong to any groups and they want to know what to do to help, if they would write a personal note and a Christmas card, it would be such a great thing. They begged for news from home, and the children were drawing pictures and sending names on it. This is one of the Brownie troops. This is the little Girl Scouts again, okay. And there's our seniors again. But this is what it looks like when we all got together at the end of the day. This is what building community is about, supporting your troops. That's the faces of what we do. So once again, I'm here to ask for your help, for the use of the buildings, for the use of your God-love-them personnel. We can't do this without the city employees anymore. They are wonderful people. It makes you so proud to belong to the city and know that those are the people serving our people. They are a top-notch bunch. So thank you for the time.
Good evening. I'm Bob Barrett. I used to be the mayor. Last year, you and I pointed out that the support for the troops is waning. And this city has always been a leader in terms of supporting the veterans. We were the first city in the state of Arizona to do a homes for the troops, which found someone who was severely injured, and he got a free house. And it was built totally on volunteer donations and volunteer labor. And Mr. Edwards was out there slinging his gravel on the day we were putting in the yards. Keep, I'm going to take you back for just a moment. There's, there are similarities between this war and my war, which was Vietnam. We didn't have any real communications with people back home during my time. You could go, if you were in a larger base camp, they might have a Mars system, which is a radio-operated thing, you could call home. Well, you know, the line would be so long that all the single guys, like myself, we'd just let them go because, you know, you need to talk to your spouse. Now, today, our troops have email, you know, and they have, they can get on the computers with the, what you call it, the phone system through that, and can contact their home. But the real troops that you want to reach are the troops in the field. They don't have email. They don't have computers. They don't have TVs. They are throwbacks to what we experienced, which was the only thing you're going to get is snail mail. That's your only contact with home. And it was critical to, come the holidays, that you got a package there. Because keep in mind, you're always under, you're always in fear. You're always possibly under siege. You know, you'd get mortar rounds would come down, you'd have no warning, all of a sudden explosions start taking place. And a mortar round going off, I always thought of it as a giant flashbulb. Guys, remember the Brownies that had the flashes? Just a series of that, and the noise was incredible. And if you didn't get hit by shrapnel, then you had the over, the over push from the explosion itself. And then what you would see is the world's fastest track meet, is everybody had it for a bunker or a foxhole or a trench. They live with that too in the Middle East, in Iraq, in Iraq, in Afghanistan. So come Christmas, they need this. This is, you can't imagine how important it is. Because most, most of the units during my time, you know, people hardly ever get packages, but then they would get some packages at the holidays. Well, you know, there's a certain number of people that get no mail, period, unless they subscribe to hometown newspaper. You know, maybe their parents are dead, maybe their only child and their parents are gone, maybe they come from a dysfunctional family, maybe they're orphans, who knows? But a lot of them have got nothing. So come Christmas, we would, you know, get a big group and put the packages together, and they'd divvy them up, so everybody got something. That's what happens with us. We send those packages, and we get emails back from the first sergeants and whoever's in charge, and they, they divvy it up amongst the kids that don't, don't get any mail. You know, they, one year, there was the Beer Festival, they got the Beer Festival t-shirts. They were very popular out there. So don't, don't forget that, that's very important. And I want to point out again, and this is critical, that just like my war, this war we're forgetting. There's no more parades, there's no more celebrations at Sky Harbor when the unit comes in. If you're lucky, your parents and/or friends are there, and that's it. So let's try to stop going down that path. I'm not saying that we should all go out and start creating, returning vets, but what we can do is make sure that while they're there, they have a connection to home. And please, join us again. You guys are absolutely critical to the success of this program, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We so want to help, and we certainly appreciate everything that you do. And, and I would like to remind everybody that the Lions Club is a tremendous organization, and 100% of the donations and contributions that they receive go to those in need. 100%. It's incredible. Thank you. All right. We are now going to proceed on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or have been previously reviewed by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered in the normal sequence of the agenda. Additionally, tonight's consent agenda includes items that require public hearing. If there is a member of the public present who wants to address an item that is a public hearing on the consent agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. Is there a member of the public that would like to address a public hearing on the consent agenda? Right, seeing none, council, are there any items to be removed from consent? Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Council, please vote.
Mayor Carlet, since we have someone on the phone, we're going to do a roll call vote?
Oh, yes, okay. Roll call vote, because we have a council member on the phone.
Councilmember Patana.
Yes.
Councilmember Benzbacher.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Finn. Councilmember Hunt.
Yes.
Councilmember Leone.
Yes.
And Mayor Carlet.
Yes. The consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business. This is item 16R, public hearing, 71st Avenue and Thunderbird Road annexation. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you, Mayor. And no council action will be taken at this time. This is a hearing, and we have Chris Hockes, our Planning and Committee Development Director, here to present.
Thank you.
Try that again. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of item 16R, this is to take a public hearing on a proposed annexation. The process for annexations are enumerated under state law, and tonight, we are unable to take any action on it, so it's just to take a public hearing, any testimony on the annexation. 16R, this annexation is proposed for approximately 11.9 acres located at the northwest corner of Thunderbird and 71st Avenue. This is an application that was filed by Cortland Communities on behalf of the landowners. The property, as you see on the screen, is outlined in blue. It is largely vacant, save for a few structures on the property. Cortland Communities ultimately desires to develop a 30-lot residential community on the property. Recently, in May of 2017, the County Board of Supervisors approved a rezoning of the property to R-110 RUPD. That's, RUPD means Residential Unit Plan Development. It's like our version of the PED, but essentially allows for 30, up to 30 lots of 10,000 square feet and larger. So that entitlement process was, was completed in Maricopa County. The landowners are now seeking annexation of these parcels into the city of Peoria. So, and we look at annexations to meet our annexation policy. This annexation would meet our policy. It can be served by our infrastructure in the area. It is within a county island that's surrounded by the city of Peoria. This graphic outlines the annexation process. As I mentioned, the annexation process is outlined under state statute, so with an initial filing, what happens is the statute requires that we hold a public hearing within the 30, the first 30 days of the annexation filing. That's why we're here tonight to take any testimony on the proposed annexation. After the conclusion of the 30-day window, then the city has up to one year to collect signatures from the landowners that meet the test for annexation. So after we've collected those signatures, then we would be coming back to the council to adopt a final annexation ordinance. So with that, that's all I have for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions for Mr. Hockes? All right, seeing none, I declare this public hearing open. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak with regards to this agenda Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Council, is there any further discussion? All right, this item is for discussion only this evening. There is no council action required, so we will move on. And actually, item 17R, at the request of staff, is being continued, so we will not be hearing that at this time. And we will now move on to speaker request forms. These are non-agenda items, and I have two of them. And the first one is from Mr. Joe Kluer. Would you please proceed to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Joe Kluer. I live at 30678 North 129th Avenue in Peoria. I'm here today to speak to you again on the issue of police priority response time. I don't know if you heard about what happened over the weekend or last week in Bastancia, but we had a lady who was home alone, early in the morning hours, about 3:30 in the morning. She heard someone attempting to break into her home. She, of course, grabbed her cell phone, ran to the closet as she called 911. For 27 minutes, she stayed on the phone, hidden in the closet, fearful for her life, for 27 minutes, waiting on the police to show up. On that night, she didn't know how long, she didn't know who was coming in, she didn't know how long she was going to have to wait, but I think we would all agree that 27 minutes is far too long. If you look at what that does to a person, I've spoken to this lady. The very next day, she went out and got a gun, which is fine, but she did so because she doesn't feel safe. And I can understand that, I think we all can. It's a shame that, you know, in that timeframe, you can literally, in the city of Peoria, get your oil changed faster than you can get priority police response time. I've showed you all this beat map before. It's about 10 years old. I don't know if you can see it. It's got 18 beats on it. 10 years ago, the city of Peoria thought that 18 officers was what was needed to patrol the streets of Peoria. In that 10 years, do you think calls for service have gone up? The number of crimes, particularly violent crimes, have gone up? The population, we all know it's exploding. The arrests have gone up over those last 10 years. But yet, we don't have 18 officers patrolling the streets today like we did when this map was created. There just simply hasn't been enough officers added to keep pace with this growth and this increased demand for service. So the night of this event, when there was 27-minute response time to a burglary in progress of an occupied house, there were only 12 officers on duty that night. That's a third of the beats uncovered in the city of Phoenix. The lady was told they're on the other side of town handling another call. It's no secret, I've been up here before. Peoria has the worst priority-one response time in the valley. It's time that we take this issue serious, that we look at it, we find out why. Frankly, it's not real difficult. When you have 12 officers trying to cover 18 beats with increased calls for service and demand, it doesn't take much to determine why the response time is what it is. And with that, I would like to request a formal agending of this item for the public to be heard on it. I'm not sure I need, who I need to give this request to. We'd like to be heard on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kluer. And we have one more speaker request item for a non-agenda item from Mr. Philip Woolbright. Would you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
My name is Philip Woolbright. I'm at 8826 West Alice Avenue here in Peoria. I'm the president of AMB Homes. It's a development company that's doing business here in Peoria. We have a development at 107th Avenue in Union Hills, just north, about a half a mile for a single-family home subdivision. In January of this year, we asked for a meeting with all the departments of construction so that we could find out when we would be able to build model homes at our subdivision. And we got input from the various departments, and it was, and there's a debate on what was said at the meeting. And in a nutshell, we said, bury the sewer lines and start building model homes, have everything, you know, safe and side of fence, and we would be able to continue. And then, in April of this year, I just asked for permits for model homes, and that was prior to pulling a permit to start digging in the ground out there. So of course, they said, "No, you can't start building model homes. You don't even have a permit for building or digging in the ground." And we started testing the city at that point, because this is something that's been repetitive since 2004. I've had it happen in 2004, 2015, and now again. And so, we're trying to bring it to your attention. So I, I basically said, "Okay, so what is required?" Now, we're going to pull permits to get our ground going, and, and there's quite a bit of money involved in doing that, and a bond. And they said, "Well, make your lots..." Basically, our response was, "Make your lots appropriate, and we'll let you know what you need." And that was, that was inconsistent to what we thought was reasonable. And so, we asked, you know, "Please give us some clarity on what that means to make a lot appropriate so we can start building vertical houses at our subdivision." And so, we got a list of guidelines that said, "If you meet these guidelines, we'll let you start building model homes." So what I did was I made sure all the guidelines were in writing, and I went and made promises to my investors and to my customers and said, "Look, I've got all this in writing. We're going to do this right here in October." And then, in October, I had the guidelines met, and I asked for permits, and they said, "Oh, no. We're not going to, we're not going to abide by our handshake or what we put in writing. We're going to have you take care of all of these other items, and we're going to add a few more items as well to that list." And frankly, I think that's a little bit of retaliation for me complaining. And I speak for several builders that, that say that it's very difficult to get through a process without any clarity. That's all.
Thank you. As I'm sure you're aware, we're unable to reply to non-agenda items from the dais. We will now move on to reports from City Manager. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. And just one item that we have today is just to discuss an event that recently occurred on Thursday, October 5th. The city of Peoria held a homeless outreach event, and with us today, we do have Chief Roy Mentor, Detective Lisa Scott, and Debbie Pearson, our Human Services Coordinator, as well, to discuss the activity.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne, and good evening, Mayor and Council. As the City Manager stated, on Thursday, October 5th, the Peoria Police Department, in partnership with several other organizations, held our second homeless outreach event. Detective Lisa Scott, who's here with me today, handles our homeless panhandling issues, along with our crisis intervention program... issues, along with our crisis intervention program, was instrumental in organizing this event, which resulted in a couple of great success stories. So this evening, I invited Detective Scott and our Senior Human Services Coordinator, Debbie Pearson, to discuss this great event. Detective Scott?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Counsel. Or good evening, I should say. It's been a long day. Speaking of long days, what I do is I go out and I do homeless outreach, and I work with people who have mental illness, and a lot of times, those do overlap. So what we decided to do is, since I've been doing this and had Debbie Pearson right next to me right now, which is very appropriate, because she's been very instrumental with trying to get this program up and going, is we have a lot of services that we use when we go out and contact folks, or if people call us to go contact folks as well. So with doing that, we realized that a lot of these services, it would be easier if we could get everybody in one place at the same time, so that we can have people meet everyone in one location. Sometimes that makes people a little bit more comfortable, and it gives our resources and our partners time to actually use each other, so that everyone can be involved and find out what this person needs, and how everyone can work together in partnership to make sure this person gets their needs met. Because obviously, you know, some of these individuals do come in contact with us, and they do go to jail. Jail is not always what's appropriate. Sometimes there's other things that we can do to get them rehabilitation for substance abuse, which may be leading to some of the thefts and some of the things that we see. Also, too, people with mental illness, it's funny, a lot of times, they don't realize they have mental illness, and they self-medicate. So with that going hand in hand, we need to be out there and trying to be active to get these individuals help. We had a lot of partners that have been helping with us for quite some time. As you can see with our flyer, many of these resources were at the event, and they were helping as well. So the partners that were actually there, we have Peoria Human Services, which Ms. Pearson's right next to me, and again, they were being very, very helpful, not just with this event, but they've also been helping us find other resources that want to partner with us as well. They've been making a Peoria Resource Guide that we pass out. They've also been making connections and getting other partnerships connected with each other, so that we can all build and be a team, because that's really important. If we don't have these partnerships and work as a team, some people will fall through the cracks. So we have to make sure we do that. Partners in Recovery, right here in our city, they've been very instrumental as well. They have case managers that work with people who do have mental illness, and sometimes co-occurring disorders such as mental illness and substance abuse. Southwest Behavioral and Health Services, they've become a newer team member, and they are definitely going to be helpful, because they will actually do reach out for folks when they go to the jails. So if somebody does go to jail, they'll reach out to them while they're actually in jail and get them services, they'll get them evaluations, and get them connected to clinics as well. Clean Slate, they're the ones that will deal with people who have the opioid addiction, which is pretty rampant, and that's something we see a whole lot right now. So what they'll do is, they offer the drugs to help them get off the opioids, and they'll work with people who are homeless, people with insurance, pretty much anyone. And if the individual is homeless, they'll also help them get onto access and some of the things like that. So we also have Community Bridges Path Team. These individuals have been super important, because one of the things that they will do is, they will come out to the person that is homeless, and they will keep re-engaging with them. So what that means is, sometimes it's hard to sell some of these resources right off the bat. Some of these individuals have been homeless for so long that they don't know anything else. Like, to offer them a shower means nothing to them. They haven't had to do that in like years. So these individuals, keep coming out and keep engaging them and trying to get their story, and dig deep to try to get that relationship to get them to hopefully move forward. And we had the GCU nursing students. They did some brief, like, just blood pressures, kind of like heart rates, real brief, just little medical assessment when they came and checked in at our event, just to make sure everybody was okay, and make sure that if higher medical needs were needed, we could get Peoria Fire there and take care of that. The Peoria Citizens Academy and alumni, they have been very, very helpful as well. Prior to this event, they actually helped us get plane tickets to send a family back home to Tennessee to get reconnected with their family and get back on their feet. So at this event, what they did is, they were kind of our guides, if you will. So when somebody came in, they helped them to get checked in, and they stayed with the person, so that person would be comfortable. They tried to assess maybe what else they needed. They'd take them over to a booth to get them connected. That way, they didn't feel like they were just kind of out in the wind, and there's like twelve different booths to go through, and they weren't sure where to start. So this person kind of stayed with them and kind of helped them out. Chance Shelter, they were there to help the needs of any pets. Many of our homeless have dogs or cats, or sometimes both with them. So they provided shots, they would do a quick exam, they gave them dog food, cat food, leashes. I know we had one dog that showed up, and that dog was spoiled. They got dog food, a jacket, a harness, a bed. They got like everything imaginable. We also had Recovery Innovations of Arizona. They've been a big partner as well. For individuals that do struggle with mental illness, and really, that's an appropriate placement, and they're a danger to themselves or others, this is the facility we would take them to. What's nice with them being there at the event is, they were able to get many of these individuals back in touch with their caseworkers and case managers. So then they were able to get back in touch with their clinical team. And New Leaf, they help specifically with families and with women. They've been very important with this process as well. They've helped house a couple of the women that I've been out with. They get in contact with DV Shelters, too. Department of Veterans Affairs and the Vet Center, they've been very helpful. Just to share with you real quickly, not specifically with this event, but one of the homeless men that we were dealing with, he had been homeless for years, he'd been an addict for years, and I just found out recently, the Vet Center that's here in Peoria, we made contact with them, got this individual to them. He is now clean and sober, he got his citizenship, and he is now housed. So these partners have been very, very important. And then Phoenix Rescue Mission, they have both men and women shelters, they have rehabilitation programs, they were there as well to provide services. So, this was held at Ria Vista Recreation Center. As you can see, we had some signs up. The reason we did that is, everyone actually had their own entrance, so that we didn't disrupt the flow of whoever was coming in to visit the center. You could go around to the back, there was a patio where people could go in and check in. So that way, we kept all of our folks in one area, and we'd have them check in with us, because there was a police officer there, and then also with adult probation. They weren't listed on the flyer, because we didn't want to scare people away, but they became an important partner, because we did have some people that show up that had some warrants, and what they did is, they actually, since they were getting services, were able to freeze those. In fact, one of the individuals had a warrant, but because he was doing, getting resources and wanting to follow through with some treatment, they were able to freeze that. So that was, that worked in his benefit. So this is kind of what it looked like. We had some tables in the middle, we had some booths kind of around the edges. The tables in the middle were also for if somebody wanted a little bit more one-on-one with an individual, and we had to get kind of creative, and everybody was really patient. We had a couple people that, too overwhelming to walk inside the building, so they were outside, and some of our resources actually met them where they could be. Sometimes you have to meet people where they're at. So for some of these individuals, that was outside, away from everyone else, but our partners worked with them. That's pretty much what it looked like inside. Here's some of our partners working with folks right there. So this is what everybody wants to hear, right? Our success stories. So, this is what happened. We had seventeen homeless individuals that actually came to the event, whether they walked in on their own, or we went out and made contact and brought them there for some type of resource. The Path Team was able to provide four apartment vouchers for homeless individuals, which is really, really nice. And New Leaf provided a single mom and her four children housing that day. Phoenix Rescue Mission transported one individual down to their facility to get them started with rehab and some of their resources. The VA assisted a homeless veteran and his wife and got them housed. And then, of course, all the other ones got additional resources and things as well, so that at least that seed got planted, and people knew there was hope out there and some help and where to find it. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to my partner here.
Thank you so much, Detective Scott. I just wanted to say thank you, Honorable Counsel, for letting us be flexible with our programs. It's very rewarding to work for a city that departments collaborate so well with each other. I think between, you know, PD has their knowledge, Ginger and I have ours for Human Services, and it was like, hey, let's help each other out. And I think in the end, it's the citizens and those that need us that really, you know, get the value of this. And so thank you so very much. And I wanted to say thank you for, you know, inviting us to be part of that. Collaborating is so important. I think it is what gets the job done, so I appreciate that you allow us this flexibility. Thank you.
And Mayor and Counsel, just to end this, thank you once again, echo those comments for your support and your assistance in providing us an opportunity to provide these types of services to members of our community. Also, Vice Mayor Edwards, thank you for your participation in the event, and actually going out and riding in the ATV with us and assisting us with this event, so we really appreciate your participation also. And we will entertain any questions Mayor or Counsel has.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
No comment.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity. It was a very eye-opening experience. And Lisa, I want to commend you and your staff, and Debbie, and Karen. The key words that come to mind for me are compassion, respect, and caring. I mean, from every time that I watched you talk to an individual, it was very respectful. You understood their issues, you knew a lot of them by name, which was incredible, and they knew you. And so I thought that that was the relationship that you're building with these individuals, I thought was very important. And so you knew their strengths and weaknesses, and we had a few individuals that were reluctant to ask for assistance, but your persistence was able to win them over, and they actually came in and got the help that they needed. So again, Chief, you and the department are doing a phenomenal job with this, and I just, I'm very supportive of this program, and I hope it continues for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all that you do. We appreciate it.
Hey, we have it.
Yes, yes, Council Liaison.
All right. At first, I'd like to say that I'm very, very proud of what you guys are accomplishing. I don't want to get teary, but I know that the...
The homeless is kind of like a forgotten community. And sometimes we've got to realize that we're all people. And it's just great that you guys are going out there and helping one another and trying to reach out to these people that need help, that may have not gotten help, because others are just so ignorant, they think that the homeless are just terrible people, that they put themselves in that position, but sometimes that's not the case. And thank you for what you're doing. When's the next event?
So that's a good question. Mayor and Counsel, I can tell you, we'll be having another one. We'll make sure everybody's aware, and we'll advertise like we did this last time. But we do feel like it was very successful. All of our partners feel the same way. I'm sure we'll be doing another one, so that we can do this again and help other people, and we'll keep doing it. And I know our partners feel like it was very beneficial, too, and they made some of their own partnerships. They found out other resources that they didn't know are out there. Because again, we are a team, and we've got to work together as such.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Member Ben Sparker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say congratulations. I love the collaboration. Thank you for presenting the numbers, the results of what happened. This is, we heard about the Christmas for the troops and building strong community. This here, what transpired, what you presented, is just a fantastic example of what it means to build a strong, vibrant community, and pulling together the way you have to make this happen is just unbelievable. We're very proud. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We really appreciate all that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Tine?
Great, thank you. That's all that we have, so thank you very much for the comments.
Thank you. We will now move on to reports from City Manager, and we can start with Youth Counsel Liaison Acosta.
All right. So, ten on a happy note. I attended the Peoria Gain Festival on Saturday. I was very, it was one of my first events, actually, attending that Peoria hosted, and it was very fascinating, and, I don't know, I really loved seeing all of the kids just having fun and interacting with our police officers, our fire people. It was just a great event to see everybody out there and enjoy a great night with their family. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel Member Patanna?
Thank you, Mayor. On October 11th, I went to the Chamber of Commerce Quarter of the Luncheon, and our City Manager was the guest speaker, and he did a really great job. His talk was both informative and inspiring. He talked about what's going on in the city and what his future is for the city, and it was, everybody there, I really enjoyed his, so nice work. On October 14th, I went to the Gain Public Safety Night. It was well-attended. It was another free event for the city. A lot of families were there, police and fire equipment was there, bouncy houses, a helicopter, free hot dogs and getaways. It was really nice to see how well-attended it was, and how many families were there for this event. So it's just a great event for the city. While I was at the Gain Event, I actually had a number of people come up to me and talk about, that they didn't realize that the city of Peoria had so many services available to them. This sort of, this program that's being run now by Community Assistance is kind of an offshoot of what we do when we have our, all of our nonprofits come to our city asking us for money to operate their programs. And one of the questions that we used to ask was, we have sixty, seventy nonprofits coming to us, and we wonder if the people in Peoria really know that they have these services available to them. And I know when we started this program, the list of opportunities that they had was a half a page. Now they, it's a book, and it's written in Spanish and English, and there were several people that asked to have those books, and there's hundreds of names in there now. Sometimes, when they contact the city, that we're either the first place they contact, or in desperation, we're the last place they contact. And as a city, we're big enough now, or we should be able to tell them where they can go get services and where they can go get help in, and we do provide that now through Community Assistance. So thank you, guys, for doing that. You know, when I, I want to also talk a little bit about the homeless outreach. When I worked for the city, I was the guy who was responsible for doing the homeless outreach, and I found some very strange places where the homeless used to live. But all I used to do was count them, and I would move on. Once I would see, there was four or five under a bridge, or in a boarded-up restaurant, or someplace, I'd count them, and I would move on. What they're doing now with the homeless outreach is quite amazing. They provide medical assistance, housing assistance, they give apartment vouchers, far more than what I ever did. So I'm really happy to see that this has evolved into what it is today, and I hope we keep doing this. You know, the word compassion and respect came up from our Vice Mayor, and it's true. We don't know why these people are homeless. We don't know how that, what situation occurred in their life where this happened. And so they needed to be, they need to be treated with respect and compassion, and I believe that's what occurred during this homeless outreach event. So thank you for doing that. Can't wait for the next one. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Member Ben Sparker?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the book. I love the book, the Resource Guide, and I will say, it is a fantastic resource. I encourage everyone to take a stack. I keep them in my car. I give them out whenever the opportunity presents itself. We do have a lot to be proud of as far as the services that we offer. Also, I want to thank Peoria Police and Fire. On October 5th, in the Terramar community, they did a national night out, and we had such great representation there by both PD and Fire. And then also, on the 7th, there was Coffee with a Cop, and I was not able to attend that, but I did hear great things about that event, fantastic turnout. Again, the sense that I get and what I hear from constituents is how grateful they are for presence in the community, and someone even said that proactive policing is being visible and being present in the community. And... and being present in the community. And I think that we're seeing a lot of that. And then the Chamber Luncheon that Bill mentioned, where our City Manager presented, I too just have to echo his comments. I was so proud. You did such a fantastic, thorough presentation. Drew people in, engaged them. They were firing questions. It was just a great presentation, well-done. And it shows how much your city means to you. And it's just, it's an honor to sit there and be part of that with you. So thank you. Good job. And I attended the Gain Event as well. And again, kudos to Police and Fire. Active couple of weeks, which I know they're active all the time. But boy, there was a lot of people there, a lot of activities, great turnout, and a lot to learn. I actually got to learn how to give CPR to a dog. Was not expecting that experience.
Yes.
I just walked up to the service dog table and there I was with the whole checking the pulse and everything. It was fascinating. And the kids loved it. So just one of many activities. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, on the 5th, I attended the homeless outreach. And again, kudos to the entire team, Chris and your team. And Chief, again, anything that we can do to assist us going further, please let us know because I'm sure that you have the support here on this day. On the 14th, I did attend the Gain Event. And it seemed like it was bigger this year than last year. And what was really interesting is watching the Theater Works young individuals doing a performance up on stage right around the time that the helicopter was making its landing. Well, lo and behold, the performance stopped dead in its tracks as they all ran to see this helicopter land in the field. So it was pretty interesting to watch that transpire. And then just a reminder, this coming Monday, the 23rd, I believe the Mayor and I will be participating in an exciting new addition to Peoria. And that's the new bus route that's going to be on 83rd Avenue. It's going to take, it's going to connect Peoria to a lot of the valley. It's going to take Peoria residents from the south to be able to come all the way up to the Arrowhead Ranch or to the Arrowhead Mall and be connected east and west as well. So it's a great opportunity. If you use public transportation, the grand opening, the ribbon cutting is on Monday at 8:30 on the 23rd at Rio Vista. I encourage you to come out. And if you don't attend the ribbon cutting, please sure, be sure you get out and catch a bus. The route's going to be running consistently from 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. And so it's just a great opportunity for those that don't have transportation to use transportation and see the rest of Peoria. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Finn?
Fantastic. Great turnout. And I want to take an opportunity to thank myself, Councilmembers and Mayor for the opportunity to call in this evening, as I got called out of town for some distance. So I do appreciate the opportunity to still participate, so thank you all so much.
Thanks. We're always happy to have you. Counselmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few things have happened the last couple of weeks, all of them good. When you leave tonight, you can say that you watched a dog and pony show because I had the privilege of sponsoring Gary the Singing Cowboy and Dusty, his horse, at Murphy Elementary School this last week. They had the kickoff for their library reading week and it was a Western theme. And this guy is just not to be missed. He's great. And his horse, I didn't learn to give CPR, I'll say that. But the horse is really talented, as is his owner. And the other opportunity you're going to have to see him is this coming Saturday at 10:00, right over here at our library, because he's going to be performing there. Okay, Theater Works, the most phenomenal show, and it's just the right season for it, is Frankenstein. I saw it Friday night, opening night, and it's probably one of the best productions that I've ever seen. And I've seen a lot of productions. It's the, it's the version where the monster or the creation is not quite as mean as the first iteration of the writing. But it's just really, really well-done. And then along that same theme, last night was the first of three Monday, let's see, they're calling it Monster Movie Mondays. And last night, they showed the old, I think it was Boris Karloff, the first Frankenstein movie, the old black and white. And I believe next Monday is Bride of Frankenstein. And the third, John, do you remember? I don't remember it, but it's another one of the classic horror flicks. $5 to get in. They give you popcorn and you have just a great fun evening leading up to Halloween. I too really appreciated you speaking, Jeff, at the Chamber of Commerce Lunch. I know your schedule is way more than packed. What I was so impressed with was so many of the Chamber members who were there are, I've gone to the Chamber meeting since 1998. And they've changed over the years, the participation. And a lot of these were newer business owners. And they were so impressed with what you had to say about your vision for Peoria and what Peoria has to offer. I know they left feeling that they've landed in a really good place. And again, I want to thank you because I know it takes time to prep for something like that. Okay, how many of you, raise your hand if you knew that this was National Friends of the Library Week? Wow, that's great. That's great participation. Well, now, now you all know it, okay? So raise your hand if you know that this is, okay, a lot, a lot better on that. Well, I do want to brag about our friends. Again, I joined back in about 2000 and I think there were four of us, seriously. And just was really difficult. There was no electronic communication at that time. It was really, really difficult. And now they boast 100 members in the Friends of the Peoria Public Library and 11 sponsors. That means companies like Kohl's and others that come out and give them stuff to animals, give them books to present in elementary schools and so on. And just to let you know how active they are, this past year, so far this year, I should say, they've sponsored 67 programs. And these are all free. They're all free to kids up through high school, even older. 2,300 kids attended the summer programs. 2,300. That's a lot of kids. They supported a summer intern for Peoria Main Library. And we now have 99 new library card subscribers. They ran a program. I think if you got your very first library card, you got a stuffed animal, right, Colleen? And they really turned out for that. So little tiny kids are getting library cards. They show it when they check out a book. It's getting that, that reach for literacy right into their hands as little tiny children. Colleen, raise your hand and wave. Most of you know her, more than probably knew that it was National Friends of the Library Week. But she is the Director, is that your title?
Programming Chair.
Programming Chair for the Friends. And she is a ball of dynamite. Do not stand in her way if she's going after something. And she has a wonderful board. I went to their meeting today, wonderful, active Board of Directors. And then the next thing that they have coming up, and this is through City of Peoria, it's called Explore the Library. And it will take place right over here at Peoria Main. It's for all ages. It's when they have their book fair and they have their upcycled books. They have a rock wall. Police and Fire will be there, carnival games, Home Depot craft, food trucks, a face painting, the book sale, selfie booth, and my friend Gary and Dusty the Dancing Horse. And Theater Works will be there. They hopefully won't be scared off this time by helicopter. It's just going to be a whole day of amazing adventures, all centered around the library. It's just not your grandma's library anymore. It's just way friendlier. There's no "shhh" in there that most of us grew up with. So give it a shot. You'll have a great time. And I think that might be about all I did this last two weeks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Leone?
Yes, thank you. I just got a few things that I wanted to mention. This is a great crowd here tonight. I was wondering what was going on because seeing this many people, it gets you all excited. Anyway, we had a, I went to a breast cancer luncheon. And you know, this breast cancer luncheon was here in City Hall. And it's very important that we support it and we donate. Because there's a lot of people coming up. If you read the papers and the news, there's a lot of people getting this breast cancer. And I think it's important that we fight this and win it. And let's go forward with this and keep on The other thing was that the Police Department gains, and that's a great event. At that event, there's always something that everybody looks forward to every year. And it's just something that we just love to see happen. And hopefully that it'll get bigger and more people will attend it. We had a Shred-a-thon on Saturday. It was a good, it was a great Shred-a-thon. And a lot of people got rid of all their names and addresses. They didn't want anybody to get a hold of. And I don't blame them. Well, I'm looking, I'm looking for another Shred-a-thon, maybe in about four months. And it's going to be up in Country Meadows and Sand Cliff. And it's going to be important that if you have anything that you want to get rid of, this is where to bring it. Bring it to the Shred-a-thon. God bless each and every one of you and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone. And there being no further business, we are adjourned.